Good morning, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our first budget hearing for fiscal year 2019. We will have a series of hearings over the next couple of weeks. We have the next hearing scheduled for Wednesday, June 6th, and then we have two other hearings scheduled for Monday and Tuesday of the following week. Today, we will be hearing presentations for the general fund overview, police department, fire department, parks, and then the finance department. Clerk, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Baines.
Here.
Bredafield.
Here.
Capriolio.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Olivier.
Brandau.
Here.
President Soria.
Here. And so I just wanted to make an announcement. I got a message from councilmember Olivier. He's feeling under the weather today, so he won't be here today, but hopes to be back tomorrow. And councilmember Baines will be in a few minutes. So if we can all stand for the flag salute.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll go ahead and get started with the first presentation, the general fund overview. I just wanted to remind my colleagues, we'll be just conducting the hearing as we have previously. We'll hear from staff. You are allowed to obviously ask any questions at any point and make any motions, and the motions, if they have a second, will be put on the hopper, and then we will vote on those at the end of the budget hearing process. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, council president. First of all, can you hear me? Okay. Council president, council members, my name is Henry Fiero. I'm the interim budget manager. Today begins the FY 2019 budget review hearings. We will start with the general fund overview, then proceed with departmental reviews. The format for the reviews will be the same as last year. The city attorney's office outlined the process in a memo distributed on May 31st. I will present an overview of the department's budget, hitting the highlights, as it were. If council has any specific questions concerning the department's operations, et cetera, the department director and their staff will be here to answer those questions. If council members wish to make motions to change the budget, they can do so anytime during the hearing. Please note that motion must get a second to be recorded by my staff and the city clerk. We will distribute the motion and direction lists each day. Motions will be voted on June 19th. After the motions are voted on, my staff will reconcile the changes into the enabling documents that will be voted on June 21st. One other housekeeping item before we begin is to formally report that per the Transparency Act, the listing of all professional services contracts of less than 50,000 have been updated and is available on the city's website. So to begin with, the general fund overview, you'll find that starting on page A-77 in the budget book. General fund ongoing revenues excluding carryover in FY 19 totals $331.8 million. This is a 4.3% higher than FY 18 amended and 3.1% higher than the FY 18 estimates. Increases are reflected in most revenue categories, however, interdepartmental revenue is declining as the fire safer grants are sunset. Total FY 19 resources are $341.3 million. This includes the carryover from the current year, FY 18, which is estimated at $9.5 million. Several factors contributed to the estimated carryover as follows. The primary cause is greater than anticipated property and room taxes, as well as slightly higher intergovernmental revenues, which is mainly due to property revenue from the RDA. Higher-than-budgeted charges for services, primarily in development, parking, police, such as vehicle release, and code enforcement for the remainder of this year. And lastly, lower overall expenditures, which includes some capital projects programmed from FY 18 into FY 19. Increases in the various revenue categories over the five-year projection vary from 1% to 4%. These are conservative projections. There are several unknowns with regards to revenues. One, the health of the continued economic recovery and expansion, as well as the effect on assessment values. And two, the potential for a slowdown in any of the major revenues. The three largest revenue categories are property tax, sales tax, and charges for services. Together, they represent approximately 77% of the total general fund operating revenues. A chart showing the major revenues for the general fund is provided on page A-85. So if I may, I'm starting with property tax. This category is estimated at $131.7 million in FY 19, which includes RDA increment. This category also reflects a growth rate of 3% over FY 18 estimate. The number reflects an estimate of the impact of the upward reassessment of properties within the city. Per the assessor's office, that is the single largest factor for next year. Property tax is 40% of ongoing general fund revenues. Out-years estimates average about 3.5%. It should be noted that Proposition 13 passed in 1978, which affects real property only. Sales tax is estimated at $87.8 million in FY 19. Largest sales tax categories are general retail at 29%, transportation at 25%, and food products at 19%. These have been steady for the last few years. Sales tax is 26% of ongoing general fund revenues as well. The latest information we have indicates that for third quarter 2017, restaurants, department stores, and new auto sales were the largest segments. Service stations continue to stay below their high. A portion of this revenue stream is from e-commerce. We get approximately 60% of the 1% sales tax from internet sales transactions. The FY 19 growth factor is in line with projections from uni services, which is 3.7% in FY 19 and average of 3% thereafter. Next category I'd like to cover is charges for current services. This is a revenue category the city has the most control over.
Henry?
Let me turn on this mic. Thanks.
Yes.
Why are we seeing a decline in sales tax? Any concepts there?
No, it's just primarily, it's gonna be a conservative outlook, I suppose, what we know today, because the further you go out in time, it becomes a little more difficult to actually predict what's gonna happen.
Okay, because am I reading it correctly? On the chart on page A-78, it looks like it's almost 10% down over last year.
Counselmember? Uh, FY 17 included the final true-up for the triple flip, and that was a one-time bump of money that the state gave us to finish up the triple flip, which was done over the course of 10 years to pay back bonds that the state issued. And so they diverted some of our revenue during that time, and this is a final true-up in '17 that happened. And so that is not reflected in '18's estimates nor in '19's, because the triple flip is now ended.
Okay, and so if I would've went further back, this is more in line?
Yes, it is.
Historical?
Yes, it is.
All right, cool. Thank you.
So in regards to charges for current services, this is a revenue category the city has the most control over. It is the third-largest revenue stream in the general fund. It accounts for 10.7% of total ongoing general fund revenues. About 61% comes from the Department of Development and Resource Management, also known as DARM. The rest comes from public works, parks, PD, and fire. Samples of this revenue stream include permit fees, inspection fees from DARM, PW, and Fire, plan check and review fees, vehicle release fee, and our share of vehicle code fines. Code enforcement and parking revenues, as well as gate and leak fees from parks. This revenue category is estimated at $35.7 million for FY 19. This is higher than FY 18 estimates by nearly 5%. PD charges for services are also planned to grow due to the expansion of their motor unit, which should positively impact impound revenues. Next, I'd like to touch on what I call other revenue categories, such as business license tax. FY 19 estimate is $19.6 million, a growth of 3.3% over '18 estimates. Part of this increase is the estimated revenue from increased code enforcement efforts to ensure all rental property owners are paying the appropriate business license fees. Room tax, the FY 19 estimate is $13.4 million, growth of about 2.5% over '18 estimates. It is on track to exceed '18 estimates by approximately $328,000. Franchise tax, it is estimated at $14.4 million in FY 19. It consists of multiple components. For example, franchise fees associated with Comcast, AT&amp;T, and PG&E, total $9.4 million, while commercial solid waste and roll-off bin fees are estimated at $4.9 million. Finally, a note on general fund appropriations, which start on page A-86. Total appropriations are $318.3 million in FY 19, which is 3.1% above FY 18 estimates and 2.1% above the FY 18 amended budget. The various expenditure category percent changes over the five-year projection vary accordingly to known circumstances and anticipated changes.
Henry, before you get too far on A-85, it's, bottom of that page, it says other revenues, bottom right. I didn't hear you address that. And what I'm particularly interested in is the sales of real property, unclaimed property, and obsolete items. I don't know what that amounts to or the totals or where we're putting that in the budget. A-85, bottom right, other revenues.
Counselmember, those amounts are relatively small. They're dealing with obsolete property that just happens to come by and is sold. I don't think the entire category is more than several hundred thousand dollars, and that money is all taken into account when we build the general fund budget. So it's not as though it's taken and it's put over into another pot. This is all part of the overall revenue of the general fund that is used to support the expenditures that you see in this budget. So it's not extra revenue. It's taken into account when we build the budget, and it's used to fund the appropriations that you see and you will be talking about over the course of the next four or five meetings.
So do we know how much sales of real property totaled or unclaimed property, and specifically, where do we plug that in the budget?
We can certainly get that information for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
With employee services, it is budgeted $192.3 million in FY 19, which is up 8.4 million over FY 18 estimates and 9 million from the FY 18 amended budget. The budget for this category fully funds contractual MOU increases approved by council. For example, there is a 3% program in FY 19 for PD sworn. It also includes full-year costs for 38 positions that were added under the general fund in last year's budget. You'll note that in last year's budget, quite a few of those positions were partially funded due to the ramp-up of when they would be hired. So in FY 19, now they're funded at 100%. It also fully funds 830 sworn positions in the police department and 334 positions in the fire, again, sworn. In the five-year forecast, the increases in this category vary according to MOU. This category is not just salaries, but includes lead payoffs, overtime, premium pays, workers' compensation, and other personnel costs. In conjunction with employee services, I'd like to note that FY 19 general fund budget includes a $5.4 million for plant attrition. This amount is a key component that contributes to balancing the overall general fund. The calculated amount is determined by taking 2.3% of the total combined budget in employee services, health and welfare, and retirement contribution costs. This rate is also applied to the out-years as well. Next, health and welfare costs are up 2.3 million for FY 18 estimates. A 3.3% increase in premium is included in the budget, of which 50/50 split per most MOUs. Also, that 3.3% increase is also the growth factor that has been applied in the out-years. Retirement contribution. The budget for this category reflects the rates approved by the retirement board for FY 19. Rates vary now with MOU changes, but 18.72% is programmed for sworn positions and 10.58% is programmed for general positions. Growth factor of 5% in FY 19, 4% thereafter. O&amp;M maintenance is up $382,000 from the FY 18 estimates. This increase is primarily attributed to the establishment of a public safety fleet maintenance unit under the transportation department. The funding source for this unit will be the general fund, whereas in prior years, this unit was under the internal service fund. This expense type includes a 1% increase in the out-years. Interdepartmental charges are down 6 million from FY 18 estimates. This decrease is primarily observed under the police department. Fleet service charges are not part of PD's budget, but will be accounted for under the new public safety fleet maintenance unit under the transportation department. The expense type includes a 2.5% increase in out-years. Minor capital is up 2.7 million from 2018 estimates. Similar to the O&amp;M increase, the main driver for this increase corresponds to the establishment, again, of this public safety fleet maintenance unit. This unit budget will fund the acquisitions of public safety vehicles under this category. Moving on to transfers, debt service. Detail for citywide debt service can be found starting on page A-15. Total debt service for the general fund in '19 is $34 million. This reflects the debt refinancing is also in the five-year forecast. The city obligations is $1 billion, of which 57% is backed by enterprises. Transfers do not include POB or lease payments. Those are paid through department charges. And finally, general fund reserve, which can be found on page A-90. The reserve balance is estimated to be $23.9 million by the end of FY 2018. It includes an RDA loan repayment of $3.2 million, which has been received this year. The proposed growth over the next five years is funded by the repayment of RDA loans only. Counsel, this concludes my overview of the general fund, but if you'll permit me, I'd like to take a moment to formally thank the members of my team, Sharon McDowell, Pedro Rivera, Scott Motzenbacher, Alma Torres, Todd Stermer, and Elise Muniz. Many hours and extended weekends were applied to the budget process by these folks, and I truly appreciate all their efforts. I also like to thank the departmental staff who assisted us, who also spent many hours and weekends towards the budget process. Again, thank you, council, and council members, for your time.
You know, I have one more question for you on A-89, bottom right. We had that extra pay period recently, and we're transferring those funds and shifting them around. How much was it and where did it finally end up? It seems to infer the emergency reserve, but I don't know the amount or...
The actual 27th pay period reserve had approximately 4.9 million in it. That was transferred over to help support the general fund. That was not enough, because one payroll for the general fund is approximately $10 million. And so, but that partially offset the cost of the 27th pay period. There will be another 27th pay period, and I believe 2027. And so we will have to start building up a reserve to help offset that one-time cost. If we don't, then we will find ourselves with another $10 million expense in 2027 that we will have to cover. And so that's why we established this reserve, and so we have payments scheduled over the course of the five-year time window to start building up that reserve again in anticipation of the next 27th pay period reserve or the next pay period.
What's the total of that emergency reserve? I thought I saw it on a chart.
For FY 18?
Yes.
$23.9 million.
No, that's the general fund reserve. That's a separate reserve from the 27th pay period reserve. The 27th pay period reserve is exclusively to help the general fund offset the one-time cost of an extra pay period in a given fiscal year, because every so often, we have 27 pay periods instead of 26. And so we have to offset, we have to help support that cost of that 27th pay period. And so we set aside money to help support that one-time cost. And so we used that money, because there was a 27th pay period last year, and now that reserve has no money in it. And now we're having to start building it up again in anticipation of the next 27th pay period.
So the 4.9 would into the general fund to cover?
Yes, it did. In order to support that 27th pay period, we had.
Very good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I also have one more. To me, like, about 10% of our general fund is debt servicing. Is that generally correct currently?
That's approximately correct.
So about 10% of our general fund goes to paying back?
That's the current portion of the debt service, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Council president, if you like, I can give a overview of the first department, which is the police department.
Yeah, we can go ahead and move. I don't think that there's any other questions on this specific, but just to remind folks, we will continue to have an opportunity to ask questions regarding general fund as we continue through the hearings.
So first department, the police department, you can find their budget starting on page Their primary funding sources include the general fund and grants. Their total overall budget is $180,875,300, which is down 1.1% from FY 18. Their general fund budget is $164,264,900, which is down 2 tenths of a percent. Total permanent FTE positions are 1,001,08.75, which is up 8.45% from FY 18. And as mentioned earlier, total sworn positions are 830. The department's total overall revenues equate to $26.5 million in FY 19, which is about a 1.7 million drop from the FY 18 amended budget. The decrease is primarily due to anticipated declines in grant revenue services, sources, I should say. Additional grants may become available during the fiscal year. In addition, the FY 18 budget includes a one-time transfer from other funds of $5 million for the construction of the southeast police station. Moving on to expenditures, their non-personnel budget totals $17 million, which is a 2.8 million decline in FY 18 amended budget. Again, most of this decrease corresponds to either the expiration or the sunsetting of grants. Also, there's $117,800 that will be budgeted to fully fund the SkyWatch programs, regular operational maintenance. That totals about $850,600. In addition, there's $110,000 added to the budget to cover the rebuild of SkyWatch's main rotor gearbox for helicopter number one that is due in FY 19. Also, there's $26,900 for body camera lease number three for 21 body cameras. Moving on to their interdepartmental service charges, the total budget is $10.7 million, which is a 6.4 million decline. And again, the primary reason for this decline corresponds to the creation of the public safety maintenance unit that's with the Department of Transportation. So PD's fleet ID charges totaling $6.3 million compared to the FY 18 amended has now been transferred to this public safety fleet unit. Moving on to their personnel budget totaling $153.1 million is 7.1 million above the FY 18 amended budget. There is a conversion that is budgeted of a business manager position to two accountant auditor one positions. Also, there is $383,200 that has been transferred into the general fund from the CalGrip grant fund, and this is to fund five crime analyst positions, again, that were previously funded by a grant. Other personnel categories include, there's an increase of $936,600 increase in employee lead payoffs. This allows to maintain sufficient reserves to cover future liability obligations, and workers' compensation is programmed to increase by a million four. And this allows us to provide sufficient funding for this risk fund. Counsel, this ends my overview of the department. Again, the department director, the chief, and his departmental staff are here to respond to your questions.
Thank you for that presentation. I did want to make a motion that, I think it's non-personnel charges or expenditures on B-115. Last year, we appropriated $25,000 for a police riding station near the airport area, and I'd like to carry forward, make a motion to carry forward that $25,000 from last year to this year's budget, so I can make that happen.
Counselmember Capriolio, if I may. We've actually programmed that $25,000 in the budget as, if you will, a carryover. So it has been established.
Appreciate it. Then I withdraw that motion.
Perfect. Any other questions?
No.
Great. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next department.
Council president, are we going to take each department out for a public comment?
Oh, yes, we'll go ahead and do that. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item or this department? Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
You have a question?
Gary. Councilmember Bredafield.
Chief. So in terms of budgeting for new positions, are there really not, are we not really adding on this year?
There's no addition of civilian employees or sworn employees in the budget. You'll see on the page where it talks about, I believe it's B-120, the increase of 8.41 is based on FTEs, full-time equivalents, and is based on the number of officers that were added in FY 18 that were staggered hiring. So the 8.41 actually takes those into account for the entire 12-month period in FY 19.
Okay. So no new ones this coming budget? This is kind of coming up to where we were from this past budget, correct?
It, yes. FY 19, in terms of employees, total employees will be consistent with where we were in FY 18. We did lose a position to the fire department. However, we converted a business manager position into two, and so that was a net gain of one. So between those two, the only other addition to the general fund would have been five crime analysts that were previously funded through a BSCC state grant. That funding has now gone away, and so the general fund has picked up those positions.
And I also want to point out, chief, could you talk about the number of sworn positions you have?
you have right now and how many vacancies you have to let the council know that even though we're not adding positions, there is still room?
Sure. We are currently authorized in our department for 830 sworn officers for FY18. And that includes 15 of those individuals that are in the police academy at any given time. So currently, we have 804 police officer positions filled, plus an additional 15 that are in the academy. And then we have several conditional offers of employment out and several others that are in the background waiting to be hired. So we will be as close to full at 99% right now. As of within two weeks, I anticipate two to three weeks, we'll be very close to being 100% full. And have a waiting, a waiting list of officers to be hired for the department, which is very unique in this country. And it's a credit to some of the things that have been done in our organization for recruiting.
And the number for 100% is 830?
Will be 830, which includes 15 cadet twos in the academy. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Brandell.
And so, Chief, and then are we seeing the attrition trend as it's following a very predictable path? And then what does, what will that look like in the coming year?
The attrition is following a very unpredictable path. And part of that reason is twofold. You know, we went through a period of time of stagnation in hiring, which meant we had a category of individuals in our organization that all reached a retirement-type age about the same time. And so, and then we also went through a period of time where people left the organization for other agencies or the private sector. So this last year, for example, we hired 90 police officers in our department. Of those 90, the reality is we had added 22 police officers. So the other 68 were through attrition. That attrition is from retirement, separations for medical purposes, terminations for disciplinary actions, and also individuals that failed to make their probationary period or their training period. What we do find sometimes is that when we recruit an officer from another agency, perhaps a smaller agency, they get into our field training program and it doesn't take very long to determine whether or not they are able to handle that complexity of the job and workload, or they want to go back to their agency. So some of those are leaving. But we have seen attrition slow down. In fact, for the first time in many years, you know, our goal has always been about 50% new hires into the department through the academy and about 50% from other agencies' laterals. We got out of balance at one time. We were about 90% academy and about 10% laterals. We were not able to attract people from other agencies. And I think all of you know the council approved a $10,000 recruiting bonus that helps with the moving cost. We also implemented a platoon schedule within our organization. That means officers in patrol have every other weekend off, and that's a four-day weekend. And then the contract, you know, obviously, the negotiated contract was a big help. So there was some security. So now we are right back up to about a 50% lateral, 50% recruit, which is the balance we need to achieve. We have a waiting list of officers from other agencies to come work for Fresno PD now. And that's the way we used to be, and that's the way we are again.
That sounds, that sounds good. So do you think if you were to follow, well, you said it's very unpredictable, the attrition trend is different than it has been?
We anticipate, I would anticipate this year that we're going to see three per month that will leave our department, based on the youth that we see in our organization as a result of the recent hiring over the last three years. We have a significant number of people in our department today that have less than five years on the job. So we're not going to see that attrition level.
Interesting. So that's only like 36, 36 people maybe this year leaving the department for whatever reason. Last year, we had 90, is what you said.
Well, we had 90 minus the 22, which were new hires.
Okay.
Yeah, so 68. So 68 versus about probably 36, yeah. That'd be the appropriate apples-to-apples number, huh?
Yeah. Interesting. And then, and then in this budget, I see, and you and I chatted offline, that we haven't been able to add any CSOs.
Right. There was a, there was a desire to enhance our customer service unit. The one area that is lacking in our organization is our ability to respond to lower-level calls in the field. That is priority zeros or life-threatening priority ones or in-progress type incidents. Priority two is a crime that's already occurred, suspect no longer there, et cetera, all the way down. The challenge for us is we're able to get to the priority zeros and ones in the field with our officers. But sometimes what lacks is our ability to respond to those lower-priority calls. We created a customer service unit. We use cadets for that purpose. But those cadets are continually in a transition mode in the fact that they go into the customer service unit, then the academy. We train them for the customer service unit, then they leave and go to the academy. So we don't have that stability in there. So the goal was at some point to get back to having community service officers that were that stabilizing force in the customer service unit, so that they could be the ones day in and day out that are handling those lower-level calls. And I would say freeing up the officers from handling them, but the reality is the officers aren't handling them. They're waiting until the next day. And so it's not uncommon for us at night to have 100 calls holding. On a weekend, maybe that grows to 150, 160 calls waiting to be answered. Summer months, that grows to about 200 calls. And then come Monday, we whittle away at it again. But we never get down to the, we never get down to the fact that we don't have calls holding. If we can get it down to 50 or 60, I'm a pretty happy police chief. And that oftentimes is what causes constituents or citizens to complain, as I experienced yesterday out here in front of City Hall. So that's, that's an area that at some point in time, we're going to have to enhance in the police department, whenever funding is available for that.
Right. Right. Yeah, that's real important to myself as well, and I imagine my colleagues. That's what we hear. We'd love to get response for some of the lower-level calls. And it makes sense. So we're not adding officers and we're not adding CSOs this year in this year's budget. As a department, have you guys determined what should be the size of our sworn officers for our population?
I think there's, there's two answers. And one answer is it's not just the total number of sworn officers, but the availability of those officers to be used. For example, I, currently out of the 804 officers that we have, 65 of those are off on long-term absence right now, as of this week. And in addition, I have 70 police officers in the department that are dedicated to a particular use in the department based on outside funding. That would be 31 student resource officers and student neighborhood resource officers, two sergeants, and 16 officers that are dedicated to FACS and BRT, officers that are dedicated to an ABC grant, officers that are funded out as part of the AB 109 monies. There's actually more than that. There's seven officers that are dedicated there. So those dedicated officers do not allow us to have the flexibility with all 804. And so I would say what we really truly need in this organization today would be about 900 officers that would allow us to be able to do the things that we need to do proactively in terms of reducing crime and make sure we have the special units in place to address crime proactively. We need officers that are dedicated to traffic to make sure that our fatal collisions and injury collisions are not rising, the ability to police our special events, which are growing in our city, protests, et cetera. Having the enough officers assigned to the investigations units to follow up on domestic violence and sexual assaults and homicides and robberies and shootings. And also then having a number, or a significant number of officers out there in the field to respond to the emergency calls for service. That's the balance we try to achieve. Currently, we're out of balance in a couple of areas, and it's our proactive abilities as well as our investigative follow-up.
And so, and then my last question is about the homeless, homeless situation we have in our city. You guys have, you guys are spending quite a lot of resources on homelessness. The no camping ordinance demanded some of that. What kind of, what kind of resources are you currently employing for the homeless needs throughout the city?
Sure. We currently dedicate five police officers full-time. Those five police officers on a daily basis are out there ensuring that there are no encampments in the city of Fresno. They work in all five policing districts, but quite frankly, they end up spending a majority of their time in the southern part of the city, the southwest district over by the Pavarillo House. The challenge has been, obviously, with having sufficient housing for those individuals who perhaps are choosing services. And I will tell you some, some good news as of, as of this week, we, or last week, we did start enforcing the homeless ordinance a little bit more than we had on a very select basis on those individuals who are the most egregious violators. And we seem to be having some good success with those individuals now choosing housing and services in lieu of remaining out on the streets. And it's also having a contagious effect on some of the other individuals that have witnessed those arrests or enforcement activities, who are now choosing services as well. So it's, it's a start. And we, I'm optimistic about what's happening now, but we definitely at some point in time are going to have to increase our housing capacity in our city at whatever level, as we've talked about.
Well, Chief, earlier this year, you and I and several others took a trip to San Diego to look at some of the things that they did. I took a second trip yesterday with a different group of folks, some officials from the county. And there's a, was a street there called Heroin Alley.
Right.
Where people that wanted to walk on the sidewalk, it was tents for over a mile. And people, if they were going to walk, had to walk in the middle of the street around traffic. It was that congested. And they added a tent structure that housed in this location about 150 people. They added another tent structure that added about 325 beds. So within one, so yesterday, we went back to our second trip, and that heroin alley is completely cleaned, commercial street. They don't have to use the officers out in that, on that street dealing with the homeless population, unsheltered population, because there's more beds available. And now that same population, instead of being serviced by police officers, are being serviced by county social workers and other wraparound services, mental health workers, who can actually provide the type of help that the individuals really need rather than interacting from law enforcement. So what they've seen, they just had their point-in-time count as we have, and they've seen a drastic reduction in the need of spending police resources dealing with their homeless population. And when we were there, we had a talk towards the end of our day, and I brought up the area around Pavarillo House, which you're talking about, where we see a lot of expenditure of police resources and public sanitation, and our sanitation department going out on a daily basis, cleaning up messes that people have made simply because they're camping out because they don't have a place to lay their head. So we're trying to work on that solution. And hopefully, Chief, with your help, we can get to the point where our officers are working on other crimes, letting social workers work with our homeless population. So thanks for your update.
Thank you. That'd be much, much appreciated, too.
Chief, I had a couple of questions on the CSO we touched upon earlier. Is it more viable to get recruits and train and employ, put CSOs on the street than it is a sworn officer? Or can you make that distinction?
I believe honestly, there's a need for both. And what ends up happening is, like with any of us in our departments, if you, you look at what resources you have available, and that's how you set your priorities for the department. And our priorities, obviously, are making sure we're getting to in-progress crimes and incidents, and also preventing those crimes from occurring in the first place and reducing violent crime, property crimes. And so that's the priority. So the, I would much rather prevent the crime from occurring than respond afterwards and handle it. But as it stands today, we are preventing crime, but there are still crimes occurring that require a presence of someone to take that, that report, that investigation. So there's a need for both. And I would not want to substitute one for the other. And I do believe that, you know, that's not the only need, obviously. Dispatchers are a significant need in our organization. And so I just think there's, there's a number of personnel needs, there's a number of equipment needs. This budget supports much of our equipment, you know, with 60 patrol cars, 60 unmarked cars. But there is still a need for, going to be a need in the future for sworn and civilian positions.
I'm just trying to get at the point that a CSO would be easier to recruit and train and assist your department, it seems, based upon our past history of CSOs. Is that accurate or close?
The, definitely, our community service officers require less training than any civilian, with the exception of dispatch. They do not have to go through a police academy. We do all in-house training. So the amount of time it takes for them, by the time we hire them and get them on the street is far less. But what we have found with police officers, as I said earlier, we have a waiting list of those as well. It's just the training takes, takes longer to train those individuals because of the complexity of what they do out in the field, where CSOs are limited to call handling of certain types of incidents.
I'm not trying to say one or the other. I'm just trying to get the two in sync so we could have the maximum.
That's, that's the balance that we try to achieve, yeah.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chavez.
I gotta, I gotta pound the...
Thought he was starstruck for a second.
There we go.
With you, Council President.
Always starstruck with you, Chief.
Just wanted to give a quick shout-out to, following up on Councilmember Brandell's lines for the homeless, Officer Avalar Solekia doing a great job. I actually went out there right before they got there, over by Fancher Creek. Sometimes we have some encampments there, and they've been really great at that. But I wanted to ask a couple of questions just on some of the tools that our officers have. I know we supported the no camping ordinance, but there was a provision in there where in lieu of jail time, they were offered services. What have been some of the tools that our officers are using to kind of entice that option for the homeless folks that they approach?
Yeah. The, thank you, Councilmember Chavez. The first, the number-one priority for our homeless task force or any of our police officers out on the street is to get these individuals to take advantage of services that are available to them, to include housing. That's the first step. Enforcement is the very last thing that we're trying to do. In fact, if you look at the number of individuals that have been arrested for the no camping ordinance, it's very, very few. Fewer than 10.
You're in the top?
By our homeless task force. Now, some of the officers out there have exercised, I had to do it as well, but the numbers are very small compared to the number of individuals we're contacting. Getting those individuals services is, is the priority. However, many of those individuals are very comfortable where they're at today in that environment. The benefit of the, the no camping ordinance has been it gives us an option, a tool. And that tool is if you're not going to seek services and you're going to continue to try to set up an encampment someplace and be a problem for a neighborhood or a business or so forth, then we have, as a last resort, we have to take action, enforcement action. And that's what we do. And sometimes when we do that, as we saw recently, it sends a message to other individuals that are watching. Because if you have a no camping ordinance as a tool and you don't use the tool, pretty soon, people don't really care about whether or not they're going to be cited or arrested. So it is a great tool, just like the, the shopping card ordinance, the median island ordinance, all of those are very effective tools that we use sparingly, but very effectively.
And it is, it's a really tough issue, Chief. You know, having gone out there and spoken to them myself, you, you have these categories of folks that have mental substance abuse issues. You have folks that have just fallen on hard times. And then you have folks that, for them, it's a lifestyle. And they'll tell you, they're very upfront about it, hey, I'm not ready for that, and, you know, I'm comfortable doing this for now. And so I wanted to kind of ask a little bit about the process because I'm going to be scheduling a meeting with some of the property owners for shopping centers that we know that, that they congregate there. And so, do, do our officers need in place a, an official no trespassing sign? Is it something they secure from the property owner?
Yeah.
Or, or does the property owner have to verbally notify these individuals that they're not allowed on the property? I'm trying to get a, a gauge.
So, two things have to happen. Number one is, the property owner, um, must notify us in writing that we have the ability to enforce the no trespassing on their property. Uh, second is, is that they should post their property for no trespassing. And then they need to let those individuals know who are trespassing that they are not welcomed in that, uh, in that area. And then, if those individuals refuse to leave, they need to call the police, and then we will come out, and we have the ability at that point to enforce no trespassing based on the citizen's arrest of that person who owns that property.
Yeah. Good. And that's, and that's, and that's good to know. And I know that Officer Avalar has been working closely, and I think he was preparing some of the paperwork.
Right.
That's necessary for, for that, and, in that process. Uh, just wanna make sure that that's, that was the, the route we needed to go. So, last question I have, Chief, is, so, I know that we've budgeted for positions, and we've talked about numbers. I think my colleagues have thrown out different numbers here. You threw the number nine hundred out there for, for sworn police officers. So, what would that look like? And the question is, as we are adding police officers, wh- wh- what is the plan for, for deploying them? Are they going on patrol? Are they assigned to specific areas? Uh, how, what would that look like?
I- in terms of, for example, we're at, uh, say nine, uh, eight hundred and thirty officers, if there were a none, a none, seventy officers added to the department over a period of time. We would then, um, look at where the need is in the department, but I can tell you, we still need to add police officers to patrol. So, I would say virtually, um, half of those officers, if not a little more, would go to patrol. Um, a certain percentage, uh, would go to our proactive units, our, what we refer to as our special response teams. Currently, we have a team in southwest, central, and southeast, but we do not have one in northeast and northwest. There's definitely a need to create one in northwest, um, and then if we needed to, in northeast. And the other is, um, our investigative follow-up. In some of our sexual assault unit, domestic violence, financial crimes, they too need some assistance because they are so backed up on cases that they're working. And then again, with our traffic bureau, uh, we, at one time, had eighty-two traffic officers in the city. And then that number was reduced down to about thirty. And now we are slowly building back up to where we're at about fifty now. And, uh, but there is still a need for a city of our size to have more traffic. So, we would have to take a look at what, where the most pressing need is, but I'd say at least half of those would end up going to patrol.
Patrol.
And then the other half would probably be disseminated between proactive, uh, special response team, traffic, and investigations.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief.
Hey, good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Councilmember Brando.
Real quick, um, I wanted to kind of, Councilmember Brando and, and Capri, all, all the councilmembers have picked up on a thread of questioning that I wanna tease out just a little bit. Um, and I wanna kind of go back to the civilian positions that complement the sworn positions. And, and I, you know me well enough to know that, that I believe very strongly in the support staff. Uh, that is such an important component of the support of the officers. And, and I'm curious, um, how much more support staff, whether it's CSOs or our, uh, you know, cadet positions and what have you? How much, where do, where do you think we need, where do you think we need to be with that in order to really have a full complement for a police department?
Sure. The number-one pressing need in our department, uh, right now, is in communications center. Um, and I say that because of our inability to, to handle the incoming calls. Uh, so, I'll give you an example, is that in, um, two thousand and seven, we had ninety-five dispatchers. In two thousand and seventeen, and currently, we have eighty-seven, so eight fewer. A twelve percent reduction in dispatchers. So, eight fewer, ninety-five versus eighty-seven dispatchers. And the call volume, though, has jumped in two thousand and seven. We had, um, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand incoming calls, seven-seven-seven-six-hundred, is what we had. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, that number jumped to nine hundred and fifty-two thousand one oh nine. And that doesn't include administrative calls that we're dealing with in there, or outgoing calls that we have to make, to, uh, nine-one-one hang-up calls and so forth. Uh, and when you count that in, it's well over a million calls. Well, so, you have an eight percent reduction in dispatchers and a twenty-two percent increase in call volume. Well, what ends up happening is your inability to get to the nine-one-one calls as, as we need to. Uh, the state mandate, or, is that you respond to ninety, you answer ninety-five percent of your nine-one-one calls within fifteen seconds. Uh, we're, we're lacking in that arena. We, we, with this last week, we were at seventy percent. Some weeks, we're at seventy-five percent. Um, as the summer gets nearer, we're gonna be even less than that. So, that is the number-one civilian position or thing that we need to do. Now, there will be some relief on the horizon, as I shared with the city manager. We have a number of these individuals, uh, about fifteen of them that are in our training program that we have hired. They'll be coming out of that training program, um, incrementally this summer, all the way through fall. So, that will give us some relief, so that there is that plan in place. But at some time in the future, we need to do something different. We are currently working with our one-call center.
Chief, real, real quick, let me, let me add. So, the fifteen that we have in training right now, that'd bring us to a hundred and two?
No, that's included in the eighty-seven.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna, I was wanting to, so that's actually included in the eighty-seven?
Yes.
So, really, the, the number we have working right now is eighty-seven minus fifteen, that's gonna be, what, seventy-three?
Seventy-two dispatchers, and we have three off on, um, on, um, long-term absence. So, we have sixty-nine dispatchers effectively working, which means we order back a lot of dispatchers.
Right.
So, we're, we can't wait to get two things. Number one is to get these individuals off-training. Secondly, we recently, at the recommendation of the city manager, to have a meeting with our one-call center. And that is to, um, find ways that they can take some of the non-emergency calls. When, when I talk about nine hundred and fifty-two thousand calls coming into the center, uh, about, um, forty percent of those are nine-one-one calls. The remaining calls are non-emergency. The non-emergency call processing can be handled by individuals that have, um, perhaps less training than our dispatchers. So, we're trying to figure out a way how the one-call center can take some of those. Um, and so, we just started that discussion, and we're hoping that we have some solutions here very soon.
Yeah, and I was just gonna add to that. We were looking at how also to promote the non-emergency call number versus nine-one-one, and we think that education piece may help, uh, divert some of those calls to the one-call center. And we're really working closely with the chief, um, in order to see what possible solution we can come up with.
Yeah, six-two-one-seven-thousand has got to be a number that, uh, more people, um, are able, are familiar with, just like the one-call center, six-two-one-city. Um, people, or the, you know, the three-one-one or two-one-one. Well, we, we, we've got to do something, and, and we're not the only one struggling with this. This is a, a national problem across the country. Number one is, having too many people call the police, because we, in the police department, have become, quite frankly, the, the one-call that does it all. Uh, whether it's dealing with someone with homeless, mental illness, any other social issue, call the police department, we'll respond, we answer the phone twenty-four-seven. That's a national phenomenon. The other thing is getting dispatchers that have an interest in that high-stress environment. And then lastly, finding those individuals that are able to deal with all the complexities, and the long hours, and the overtime, and working your days off. So, that, that's a challenge that we face today, uh, with those.
Chief, I'm glad that you bring that up, because I know that I've kind of heard some of these challenges specifically from folks that work in that department. As you mentioned, the call volume has gone up, and so I think that, as we're contemplating, you know, how we formulate a plan to invest into these very critical resources that we need, we know we need more officers, we know we need more support staff, we know we need more dispatchers. Um, and I think it's a whole puzzle that we have to really look at, and how we work together to invest in some of these, especially, you know, when we're looking at the dispatchers, I, I've heard a, an issue of hiring and retaining them, right? Because of the number of issues that you've just, um, pointed out. And we need to talk about, what is it that we do? Is it that we make sure that we're paying them a little better? Because I think if we look at the starting salary for some of these jobs, is extremely low. And so, when we're talking about a high-stressed environment, about not having enough staff and having to deal with calls, you know, I got some information, some data about the call center, like in a twenty-four-hour period, hundreds of calls get, um, are on hold for more than thirty minutes or an hour. That, to me, is unacceptable. When, you know, someone is trying to call nine-one-one because they feel that it's an emergency, we have a duty to respond and figure that out. So, I think that we need to get serious about how we appropriate staff, starting with our dispatchers. Um, because that's the first, for many folks, that's the first point of contact that they have to be able to get to a police officer, um, to come to their door, or for a fire, um, man or woman to come to their door for whatever the emergency situation is. And I think that we need to really be looking at the dispatch center as kind of a, also, um, some immediate investments that, that need to be made.
LA, LA is experiencing that right now, too. Los Angeles Police Department, you may have seen the news, that they did not, um, pick up in time a nine-one-one call. That caller was on the line for minutes and minutes and minutes and minutes. And, uh, it was to deal with a medical aid call of a child with asthma, and that child ended up dying, and they're facing litigation. And so, that, that is, um, quite honestly, one of my worst nightmares, is us not being able to process a nine-one-one call in, in a timely fashion to get units there to be of assistance, whether it's us or getting the fire department there.
And, you know, to add in terms of, you know, talking about the issue of, um, attracting and retaining, I know that for purposes of officers, right, because we've faced the issue over the last few years to try to attract qualified or experienced officers, uh, we talked about bonuses, looking at some, if we're really struggling to hire these dispatchers, you know, have we considered, similar to what we did? Because again, these are the individuals that for many of us, when we call nine-one-one, are the first point of contact, and they're very, very critical. So, I would submit to my colleagues that we think about that, as we're looking at this budget, how do we create those incentives? One, looking at the, the pay, but also at those opportunities to be able to attract, which we did to our officers, to, you know, to ensure that we hire in officers. Um, I, I've gone to your call center, I've seen the type of individuals that are there, and I've talked to them about the experience, and it's a very high-stressed environment there. And they deal with a variety of folks and, you know, some, you know, so it's, I think that it's something that we really, really need to seriously look at, because it only makes our entire department, um, police department and our fire department, that much better. So, I hope that we can have that discussion as we look at the investments that are being made in this budget.
That's me?
Yes.
All right. Re- really quick, Chief, I wanted to, um, uh, fi- figure out, I know we're at eighty-seven dispatchers right now in the PAV. I think we, uh, a few years ago, you said we were, we had ninety-five. Uh, what is, what is the number, you know, that you think? Uh, it, it would seem, it would seem that we would need more than, than ninety-five, because that ninety-five number was from a few years ago, when the call volume was twenty-two percent less. In, in your mind, if, if you were saying, "Hey, this, this is really where we need to be to have an effective communications department," with, where, where we need to be with that?
Well, our, our numbers are, are not going to be arbitrary. They're gonna be based on what the state has recommended. The, this last year, the state came into our department, and there is a nine-one-one fee that we all pay, and that money goes into, uh, an account, and it is utilized by law enforcement agencies, what they call PSAPs, anyone that receives nine-one-one calls, uh, over every six or seven years to upgrade their dispatch center. Uh, based on our call volume, uh, they came in and revamped our call-taking center to where I believe we now have about thirty-five, thirty-seven call-taker positions in there. They felt that during peak hours, that is what we needed at a given time to process the incoming calls. Now, you don't have thirty-seven there all the time, but during peak hours, you need to. When you walk into our center today, you may go in and see nine call-takers during certain hours, and maybe a maximum of twelve or thirteen, fourteen, if we have a good day. And so, we know based on the call volume that that's what we need. So, if we're not able to get there, then we have to do some other things that are creative. And that is finding ways to divert calls out of that center that are non-nine-one-one into another body of call-takers, whether it's the, or, or, I, I don't know what the answer is to that. We've moved cadets in there to assist with some of those non-emergency calls. Um, because right now, what we're doing, we're utilizing dispatchers, what we call stabilizer dispatchers. So, in our dispatch communications center, we have an automatic call-taker system. So, whoever's the call-taker, um, if they are not on the line, that call automatically goes to them, whether it's nine-one-one or non-emergency. So, what we're doing is dedicating individuals only as nine-one-one operators, so that we can get to those calls more readily. Well, what that means is the non-emergency callers are having to hold longer and longer. So, we're, we're, we're wrestling with that. And do I, do I put more individuals there, uh, in that stabilizer capacity to handle nine-one-one calls? Uh, because, you know, the non-emergencies, um, I can live with a delay. I don't like it, but I can live with it. But I cannot live with a seven, eight-minute delay on a nine-one-one call. I just can't.
It's a long time.
So, we, we're, we're trying to figure that out. And the ideal number, um, I, I think there has to be periodic growth. Um, we were, we're, we've been on a plan to add dispatchers. I, I can tell you, in, uh, we went, uh, from ninety-five, uh, we were there in oh-nine, before the recession, w- we lost nineteen in, uh, in two thousand and ten. So, we went to seventy-six in ten and eleven. We went to seventy-nine in twelve. We went to eighty-three in thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. And then in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, we jumped to eighty-seven. So, we've been adding about, uh, four dispatchers a year. Um, at some point, that number's probably gonna have to double. I'm, I'm not saying double the eighty-seven, I'm just saying double the number we're hiring.
Eight a year, okay.
No, no. No, no. I, I mean, we're gonna have to look at some incremental growth to get us there, along with these creative measures. And I don't know what that number is, but we'll know when we get there.
Well, that, 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 that's fair, and, and, and thank you for walking through, uh, particularly the complexity and, and figuring out what that number is. It's not, yeah. I, I know for sure it's not arbitrary. Um, and like my colleagues have pointed out, it, it's always good for us to know what, what the goal is. Uh, you know, we, we, we definitely should have goals that we're trying to, to meet. So, I'd be curious to see that, you know, how, how the conversation with communications evolves, uh, you know, as, as we, I probably won't be here, but it's, I'll be curi-, I'll be curious to see where it goes.
Well, I'd like to get us to that hundred dispatch mark and then see where we're at.
Yeah, sure.
But that's, that's kind of a, at some point in time, get us to that nu- that number, and then we can reassess, see how we're doing. You know, we have some very good metrics in place, and those metrics are, how quickly can you answer nine-one-one calls? And, uh, we, we have all the systems in place to measure that. So, it's just a matter of us being able to, uh, to get the people in place to, to, to use, utilize those metrics appropriately.
And what about our C, uh, you know, CSOs? Uh, I, I know, I know at one point, when, when I was a police officer, we had a really healthy, uh, complement of CSOs in, in the, in the organization. Where do you think we need to be on the, on our CSOs? Particularly our field, I mean, well, let me not even put it there.
I, I, I know what you're doing. We, we, we have, uh, we had sixty-four CSOs prior to the recession. Uh, today, we have five. Those five are assigned one per district, and they're, um, crime prevention specialists.
In the whole department, we only have five CSOs?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And, and I'm glad you said we had sixty-four before, because I know what that means. That, that, that is, that is, I really, I had not realized we dropped down that low.
We lost two hundred and sixty civilians in the recession, uh, civilian positions. And, um, so it took a toll. And, and the goal back then, the discussions were, that we were gonna, um, not lay off police officers, which we did not, thankfully, in this city. And, but we did lose police officers through attrition, about a hundred and fifty-five. Um, as you know, the administration has made it a priority to add police officers back, and we have. We dropped below seven hundred, we were like six ninety-five. Now, we're back up to, you know, where we're, we're gonna be at eight-thirty with, with the, um, fifteen in the academy. So, that's a significant goal, our, our progress. And but, and I would, but we, we do need to ramp up our civilians. We've been adding a few, but at some point, we, when, when money allows, we gotta ramp up our civilian support staff again.
Well, you, you know, let me, let me just, let me offer this, um, 'cause year after year, I, I talk about the need for the support staff, along with sworn personnel, and, and Well, you know, let me, let me just, let me offer this, um, because year after year, I, I talk about the need for the support staff along with sworn personnel. And, and I think at some point, we, that just has to become a priority. It just, it just has to because there's no way, uh, effectively that we can serve the public with only five CSOs that are really, serve as a critical backbone of the support staff, support mechanism for, for our, for our sworn, our sworn staff, so.
Well, I know the concern, um, is maybe there's money or funding available this year to hire, but is that money available next year and the year after to support those individuals? Or do we go through another process of laying those individuals off that we fired? So, you know, all of that, I know, I get that as a department head.
Yeah, fair, fair, fair questions and, you know, they, but I think that this body, along with the administration, have to be challenged on the answers to those questions.
Sure.
And, and that's probably, we need to be challenged a little harder. Um, what, what do you, where did, Chief? I mean, in a perfect world, you'd have how many CSOs? I mean, I know we had 64 pre-recession. Where, where do you, you know, where do you think we, we would be, we need to be now to, to?
Uh, I would, I honestly like to see us add about 12 CSOs to our customer service unit. And I think at that point in time, now, we're not getting back to the days of having a, uh, our, our district stations open where a CSO could be there and somebody would come in and take, and file a report. You know, we haven't been there in years. That, that's a ideal world, that's what you want. But, uh, having 12 CSOs in a customer service unit that can go out there and handle those calls mobily in the future, if we're able to add a CSO to the district stations, they're, they're much more efficient in a patrol car going out to the scenes than they are at the stations. But I can, you know, there is a need for both. Sometimes we, well, we utilize our cadets in that capacity as well. Um, and, and our cadets, um, are very effective as well. But again, they're in that constant transition mode of going to get the academy.
Sure. They want to be officers, I mean, yeah, so.
That's why they get hired and that's why we only pay them what we pay them. Because they have that insight of being a police officer.
So Chief, you said, you, you said you really think that 12, 12 CSOs would be sufficient?
At some point in time, I think putting 12 in the customer service unit would give us a good base for where we need to be. It may not allow us to get where we need to, you know, in terms of getting to zero calls for service, but it's certainly going to make it palatable for our community when they're, you know, ma- maybe they have to wait, but they don't have to wait a couple of days.
What, what is the number that would get us to zero calls for service for our community? And, and I'm not saying that we can do that this year, but we need to know what the number is because it, I always say we, that's what we should be striving for.
Well, we, we had a goal in the customer service unit. If we had 30 people working customer service, days, swings, seven days a week, we would be, uh, at zero very close depending on the time of the year. Summer months, you're going to be definitely eight mi- months of the year, you're probably going to be right at zero or better.
Yeah.
So.
And I, and I think that's a fair, that, that is a fair thing to say to us up here. Um, and we should be talking directly with the administration about stuff like that, right? I mean, and I, and I, and I understand the position you're in and, and I appreciate the fact that you're being pragmatic and realistic.
Yes.
And so I definitely appreciate that. Um, but sometimes we, we at least need to know what, what the number is.
Well, we gotta have some multi-year goals.
Gotta have multi-year goals, exactly. And the cad- cadets, we seem to be holding, you, you, you feel you're comfortable with where we're at with the, with our cadet, uh, staffing? And, and I guess that, that's kind of the training ground for police officers, so it.
It, it is, and as you know, when we have our cadets, when they're not in the academy, then we utilize them in a variety of functions and, and they do some of those things. They're in the customer service unit, not very many. They're in our real-time crime center. They're the ones monitoring video. Uh, they're the ones that get assigned to, uh, certain areas like our property and evidence. We try to get as many in the field as we can, but at the end of the day, when you look at the, the minimal numbers of cadets we have and their role in the organization, that we don't get to use them in, like we had hoped, you know? And, and cadets are a good bargain as well. They're very, really good bargain. However, if you're not going to be hiring police officers or a limited number of officers, those cadets will run into a ceiling.
Yep.
And then they'll start looking to other agencies. And what we currently have is with our ongoing hiring of officers, those cadets have a, a hope, a future. They know that maybe it's not in the next six months, but in the next year, they're going to the academy. And, and that gives them that, that, that hope. In the meantime, they're playing a very vital role in the organization.
You know, the, the last thing I'll say, Chief, uh, uh, is I wanted to, to just jump back to the, to the homeless discussion and I appreciate particularly, uh, Councilmember Brandow's, uh, comments. Um, because, because I'm convinced that the, the homeless situation is, is not a lo- a function of law enforcement. Uh, it, I've said that for, for many years. And I know that we, we have to do something. Uh, a- a- as a city, we have to respond, but, um, I appreciate Councilmember Brandow talking about the, the, the social service need, really the county responsibility that is much heavier on that as a burden, in my opinion at least. Um, now, I want to say that I appreciate the fact that our officers stand in the gap, uh, for what is a, a dramatically broken system overall. And, and really from a city standpoint, the police department stands in the gap of, of something that really isn't theirs to solve. And so I'm just commenting, Councilmember Brandow, and I appreciate your comments on that. I, I agree wholeheartedly. You know, we need to be, we need to do something to where we can really remove law enforcement as the primary, as the, uh, the primary face of, of, you know, fighting the homeless in, in the city because that's really not what police officers are designed to do, so.
Same holds true with mental health crisis issues. I have sergeant four officers dedicated to a team, crisis intervention team response with co-locating with, uh, behavioral health. It's effective, but it really isn't our role, it's not a crime.
No, that's right, that's right. So anyhow, Chief, thanks for all the work.
You bet. Thank you, welcome.
Appreciate the insight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez?
I won't, I won't talk the palm of death. I guess I'll, I'll kind of make the first, uh, I'll make the first, uh, motion to put in the hopper, uh, in the conversation that we just had, that we have our, our administration to look at what it would look like to have 12 CSOs and look at our dispatch, um, center. If anybody would second it, we'll put in the hopper.
I have a, just a couple of questions.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I, I, I came up with another comment that I'd like to throw in, but go ahead.
Okay. I just had a couple other, um, questions and comments that I wanted to, um, add. I know that the discussion on the homeless has been pretty robust up here and I appreciate, um, that topic being raised. You know, I know I was the only council member that didn't support the no camping ordinance because again, I, I believe and I have the sentiment that that's not where law enforcement should be. I'd rather have you guys responding to property crimes, vehicle thefts. And I, I get it, I know that there's business owners, some of my residents that are extremely frustrated. And so I get that you guys, um, talk about it as a tool. And, you know, I will say that I wholeheartedly appreciate the work that you guys are doing, but I wish that you guys didn't have to do it because I would rather have you guys responding to, to other calls that we get in, in the district, which is why, you know, I'm still, my position hasn't changed from, from the day that I didn't support that no camping ordinance. Um, as a result, I've also heard that we've seen an increased number of calls that come into our 911 dispatch because of the no camping ordinance. Um, and so what is that creating? You know, it's adding to the call volume, which I believe doesn't help when we're talking about response rate and what we're trying to achieve, um, as a department. And so I'd like to really see how, um, this body, um, addresses that. And really, I know that we've been talking to the, the, the county to work together, but I think that we need a little bit more from them because there's a lot of burden on our residents and the county needs to do a little bit more to help us, you know, address maybe, if, if we are going to continue to have the homeless task force, how does the county partner up to pay for some of that? Because you guys are being the counselors and, you know, you know, for, reaching out to provide the resources. I don't really think that that's your role. It should be a behavioral health person going out there, you know, trying to get the folks, to get them to the proper services. That, that's my personal opinion in terms of being effective and what, uh, our, our police officers should be doing out in, in the community.
We, we do work with the hero team and they, um, as a partner in that. So that is, uh, uh, assistance. Our sanitation folks do a great job of removing it. But I, I, I happen to agree that it, it is a, a arena that we really don't want to be in, but we know if we're not in, we're going to be in anyway. Uh, for example, last year in 2017, we had, we had seven murders in our city as a result of homeless. Either the victim or the suspect was homeless. And so we, um, stepped up our efforts this year to really get inside of these, uh, these camps, if you will, or attempted camps and, and make sure they don't exist and taking away some of their anonymity. This year, we've had one murder of a homeless individual. And so I'm glad we are doing what we're doing. I wish we didn't have to.
No, and that's why I say, you know, I, I thank you guys for the work. I just, you know, in terms of my, my philosophy.
Sure.
Um, before I ask you a couple of other questions, since we are on the topic and we're talking about the call center, I know, I just noticed Maribel, who, um, represents a number of the dispatchers, um, to give her an opportunity maybe to talk about some of the challenges that we see, um, in the call center as it, as it relates to the call volume, if that's okay?
Aye.
Yeah? If you can come on, uh... And I know that the Chief did a, a good job in, you know, presenting some of the challenges that we see in the dispatch center. Um, but just, you know, wanted to be able to get, um, some feedback in terms of, um, those challenges. How can this council and the administration support so that we do fill those positions much quicker? Because we know the call volume only continues to rise. And so in order for us to have an effective police department and effective fire department, um, you guys are really on the forefront of that battleground. Um, again, as I mentioned, for some people, it's the first point of contact. So Maribel, if you'd, maybe if you want to identify yourself so the public knows who you are.
My name is Maribel Escareño. I am an emergency services dispatcher. I've been a dispatcher for about 17 years this June. Um, I'm a 911 operator. I, I'm on day shift. I answer plenty, um, of calls, non-emergency and emergency calls. I'm also, um, the FCEA president, um, started this January. So, um, it's, it's, uh, it's been a, a very welcomed, um, time. Uh, there's a lot of challenges, there's a lot of things that we're still learning. I'm still learning, but, uh, I'm definitely, um, glad to be up here to give you kind of like an insight of what's, you know, internally what's going on. So I want to thank, um, you know, the Chief and, and his information that he gave that, yes, we do need to revamp our support staff. Um, there is, um, there has been since our recession and things are slowly starting to improve, but we still yet have a shortage of, um, support staff, not just in dispatch, but we have, you know, our record staff, our CSI crime scene techs, um, and just a variety of other, um, specifically at the police department. Um, we are, or, you know, Deputy Chief Hall is, and Captain Gross and the Chief are working on hiring dispatchers at a alarming rate. I mean, we, we do see new faces practically on a weekly basis. Um, what I have noticed though, within these few months is, um, the retention rate for these dispatchers. You hire at an alarming rate. There's 12 dispatchers that come in, but because our training is extensive and you have 12 dispatchers, but only maybe six or nine of them pass. So even though, and, and we lose them either because they don't make it, um, or because, you know, they see that other agencies have a better benefit or salary package, if that makes any sense. So, um, is there anything specific that you would like for me to answer?
Well, and, and I think that that's the, I know the, the biggest challenge, what I've heard at least um, in my conversations, has been the starting salary for some of these folks. Um, I remember hearing a story that, um, I think an individual that we hired and we spent an amount, a great amount of time on hiring within two weeks left. And so then it leaves again that, that void. So how is it that we begin to address that? Is it through, um, ensuring that we fix the, the base salary in comparison to other agencies?
We are currently, um, in negotiations and then we also are working with, uh, labor relations on a class and comp study. Um, and I really can't go into much detail, detail with that, but, um, we are underpaid and we're talking about double digits compared to surrounding agencies. So, um, you know, it's something that definitely needs to look at, you know, be looked at and, um, you know, our 911 operators are, you know, an integral part of, you know, first contact information so that we may supply our officers with the information, officer safety aspects and, you know, everything as a whole. So, um, you know.
The, the next question that I have for you, I know that the Chief mentioned that maybe this non-11 calls could be diverted. Um, do you think that would help the department in, in terms of the volume and what you guys are dealing with? Do these non, non-911 calls, um, would they become at some point maybe after, um, emergencies so that they would have to come back and call you guys? I'm just wondering how that.
So you're talking about non-emergency calls coming in?
Yeah.
That they may become emergencies? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm just saying, would that, diverting the, I think the Chief mentioned that maybe finding a mechanism to divert non-emergency calls to our, um, what is it? The call center to relieve some of the?
Right. Well, based on my experience, you know, there are citizens that call in on the non-emergency. Um, sometimes, uh, they could wait for a little bit. Mind you, they're non-emergency callers, but sometimes these citizens that call the non-emergency line, you know, it can turn into an emergency. And, you know, obviously if, if they were to hang up and call 911, you know, that would bring their call up to the queue, you know, priority. But, um, but some citizens, you know, depending on the circumstances, they just don't understand or they don't know that. So it could harm, you know, um, it could be an issue of liability. Um, so it may or may not be something that, that would help, you know? Um, definitely, uh, you know, try to promote and let people know that if you have an emergency, the prompt says, if you have an emergency, hang up and dial 911. So.
Yeah. So I guess what I would ask, if, if there is an effort to, to do that, Chief, and, you know, to the administration, I'd submit that you guys really include the folks that are on the ground doing the work to make sure that, um, it is the most effective way and if we do make changes, that it doesn't impact the ability and how we respond to the non-emergency calls. Just one other question that I have. Um, can you tell us how much, uh, dispatcher costs to the city?
On a yearly basis?
Yeah.
I don't have those figures. I don't have those figures.
Who would be able to tell us?
I can get that information for you on a.
Council President? We can look that up for you as far as what has been budgeted for that year.
Do we, do you know the base salary for a starting dispatcher?
I don't have the exact numbers.
You know, I think, I think what I'd be interested to know is, we kind of estimate, uh, about how much an officer costs and what have you. What is that estimate for?
About 65.
About 65? Okay, thanks, Chief. That, that's kind of what we're looking, we, we know it won't be exact to the, to the penny, but that's kind of what we're looking for, thanks.
Good. Thank you, thank you, Maribel, for, for that information. Yeah. And so there is a motion in the hopper that was, uh, made by Councilmember Chavez related to the, um, 12 CEOs and also the dispatchers, which I second, just.
So, uh, if, if I may, um, so for Councilmember Chavez, you, the motion was 12 community service officers and how many dispatchers?
Well, looking at the assessment of, of what that will look like. So 13 actually. That's what, that's what Chief had said, right? Was it 13, Chief?
At some point.
Some point. Basically what we're looking at, Jean, is, is, you know, and, and Councilmember Baines hit the nail on the head. We're, we're trying to look at what the plan is and what the dollar amount is so that the council can make a, a, a judgment called on, on this, these types of investments.
Okay, yeah, and, and, and just to, to reiterate that obviously, um, public safety is, is the mayor's number one priority and, and we had extensive discussions with the police department and, and he expressed these very same sentiments to, to the mayor and, and very serious consideration was given to these. That was, it's always a, a priority to, to assist our police department and, and enhance our public safety efforts. Um, but again, you know, you know, going back to the overall fiscal condition. to the overall fiscal condition of the city, just wanting to reiterate that, that it was thought that the prudent thing to do, the, the fiscally responsible thing to do, was to try to ensure that we maintained our current level of service, because that is what we are capable of doing at this particular time. Our revenues, by and large, have plateaued. And so we are, we are trying to cover as many bases as we can and trying to provide as much service as we possibly can. So certainly, the, the administration understands that, that we need more CSOs and we need more civilians because they were devastated in, in the last recession. And, and that is a need that is, is constant in the police department. And that certainly, that is the administration's first priority to, to augment as soon as the resources can be made available.
Hundred percent understand and totally appreciate that. And I think, you know, now, now really is the time for, for the council to have this conversation along with the public. And so, you know, what, what I'm trying to get is kind of a blueprint, you know, a, a, a plan of where we go. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, this council will weigh in on what those priorities are. And I just want to make sure we have all the information for that. Thank you.
Chief, I have a couple of other questions that I wanted to follow up on some of the comments that you made. And so I know one of the comments you made about what impacts the number of officers that we have. You mentioned we have sixty-five that are on long-term leave. How does that impact the officers that we have on, like, duty, on patrol? And, and I bring that up because I've heard this, you know, I work very closely with the lieutenants from central and northwest. And, you know, I've been pushing, now, this is going to be my fourth budget, and so I've been pushing for a, a bike unit in the Tower District, a permanent, not just like that it comes every couple of weeks and it does, you know, a couple rounds on olive. But every time I, I ask about it, they're like, well, we don't have enough officers on patrol. And when we do have even our officers, we have to go cover other districts because there's sixty-five officers on long-term leave.
Yeah. The, the sixty-five officers, I, and actually it's sixty-six as of today, and about a third of those work light duty, the other ones are at home. But it impacts our, our deployment because about of those sixty-six, I believe, over forty of those individuals are assigned to patrol that aren't in patrol. We added, we were at about two-hundred-and-forty officers eighteen months ago in patrol. That number jumped up to about three-hundred in patrol. And, but again, when you take out sixty-five, sixty-six officers from your complement, your ability to deal with them, and two-thirds of those are from patrol, that's, takes away our ability to use officers for a, a bicycle patrol in the Tower District, to increase our downtown policing unit, to have a, a dedicated units on the Shaw Quarter or on the Kings Canyon Quarter. It takes away our ability to do that because the officers in the field have become very, very responsive to the, the, the emergency calls for service.
So how do we deal with that number?
Well, we have gotten it down. We had a, a high, I believe, of eighty-two of long-term absence. There's been a workers' comp carve-out that has helped in some respect in expediting individuals to get treatment. And we have done some things internally to limit their, their time they can spend on light duty to six months. We are trying to encourage these individuals to get back, prevent injuries in the first place. But the reality is, we keep seem to be, get stuck right around that sixty-five number. And it, it is a frustration that we've experienced for a long time. And we, we just got to continue to work through it and hopefully get those numbers down. I, I, I believe the appropriate number would be in our department, department of our size, somewhere around thirty. So we're, we're still too high.
So what else can we do to be able to help our officers so that they...
Well, number one, I'm not sure that at a local level, it is, we have the ability to fix it. The state law changed back in two thousand and twelve, I believe, to allow for a hundred percent funding for workers' comp injuries. When a person's off injured, they get a hundred percent tax-free. Prior to that, it was eighty percent. And from that time forward, we started seeing more people off. We also know that the doctors are much more conservative today than they were in the past in not releasing officers back to full duty. So I think it's a combination of those things. And in the meantime, we just got to make sure that we're doing those things internally that minimizes the chance of an officer getting injured, even though it's inherently dangerous job. And officers getting crashes and get injured on foot pursuits and, and, you know, assaults on officers are up significantly this last two years. So we're going to see those injuries. We need to make sure that we, whatever those injuries are, we're able to get them treated quickly and get them back to work. That's a challenge for us.
And have we identified if there's like a common thread in terms of types of injuries that our officers, so that we're working towards...
Back, knees, shoulders. We've done some things internally to address the back. We allow officers to wear external vest, which is a load-bearing vest, to take weight off the back so they don't have to wear the gun belt. We've done a number of things with, you know, in terms of fitness and wellness. And I, and I do think that as officers, as we continue to hire, we get officers in the organization that are much more youthful, better physical shape, they're going to be less likely to get injured. But then those officers obviously are the ones out chasing people through alleys and do get injured. So we're, we're taking steps, but I, I, it's, it's a gradual, gradual process that we're seeing.
Thank you. I appreciate your response. One of the motions that I'd, I'd like to make, because I've been asking for this for now four years, I'm going to ask it again, and I'm going to make a motion. I know Councilmember Baines has been supportive in the past of this. I'd like to try to figure a way how we get a bike unit, a permanent bike unit in the Tower District. And so I'd like to make a motion for that. If I could have a sec. So we'll, we'll put, we'll put that in the hopper.
If I can ask who seconded that?
Um...
Okay, thank you.
Go second. I think those are all the questions and comments that I have for now. Thank you so much for all the information that you provided. Oh, yes. One last one about technology. And I wanted to see, are there other opportunities for us to invest in technology so that we are maybe much more effective and efficient? I don't know, some of the, oh my God, what are they called? Yeah, the drones. We're just having a conversation. Drones and I know that there's a little bit of controversy, right, in, in, in some aspects. But have we, what are other agencies doing? Are we doing, are we moving towards adopting additional technology to maybe help be a more efficient agency in some of our policing?
Well, I, I can tell you, you know, the development of the real-time crime center with the use of, of private dollars have been very helpful, channeling all of our video policing efforts in there, being able to monitor cameras that we operate, cameras at the, from our traffic, traffic operations center, as well as we're going to be bringing in private cameras to that center this year as well. We've been working through that. So we have access to a variety of shopping center cameras. Video is very, very helpful and helps us be efficient. There is some technology out there that allows you to analyze that video more quickly than having a person sit there and, and, and watch for two or three or four hours, where you can plug in, you want all-white pickups, and it will condense that video into about five minutes. So, so there's that type of technology. I just looked at it last week in Nashville. And then obviously gunshot detection, ShotSpotter, we've, we've added, we're at fourteen-point-two-six square miles in our city with ShotSpotter. Six square miles of that funded with Fresno Unified money, six with the general fund, two-point-two-six with a federal grant out of the BRT, transportation. And then social media monitoring is something that law enforcement is getting more involved in, especially with all the school threats that are occurring, and the ability to more effectively monitor that and, and identify those individuals that are posting those threats more quickly. We don't have that ability. And, and I think the one that, that Councilmember Baines brought up about drones, that is something that law enforcement agencies are really taking advantage of now. But Tulare County, I believe, is now looking at it. The mayor actually asked me during the budget if we could look at that in terms of feasibility. And I, I could envision us in this police department to have every sergeant in our department have a, a drone in the back of their vehicle that on specific incidents that they could launch it and, and be that aerial platform and surveil a rooftop of a, of a building, especially when the helicopter's not available to, be able to establish a perimeter from the air. But isolated incidents, specific incidents, I think it's extremely effective. Just like we have a helicopter in the air that minimizes the number of officers you need on the scene for a perimeter, the same holds true with a drone, so.
And wouldn't the drone actually be cheaper too? Because we know fuel cost and the operating of the, of the helicopter is pretty expensive from what I understand.
The, the, the heli, benefit of the helicopter, I, I wouldn't necessarily substitute drones for helicopter because of all the added benefits of pursuits. Our helicopters are involved in overtaking over pursuits from the sky all the time. A drone would, would not be able to do that. The helicopter is able to get to a scene very quickly, under a minute anywhere in the city. So they're responding to a priority zero and progress incident. They have eyes on that location before any other officer. They can guide in ground units. All of those things are very helpful for the helicopter. However, there is an added need for drones on these specific incidents. And the cost of those things have come way down to where, you know, you can get a drone now for five thousand dollars, six thousand dollars that would suit your needs. They, and the technology continues to improve. So we are, at the mayor's request and direction, doing a feasibility study of how that would, how those drones would, would function in our department and what the cost would be. We'll, we'll bring that back to the administration.
So, but nothing today in the budget?
There, there is nothing for, nothing for drones in the budget or technology enhancements other than there is some, some monies in information, information services division for networking and so forth.
Great. Thank you so much for that information. Councilmember Brando.
Chief, I'm going to direct a couple of these questions to the city manager. So I don't want to put you in the hot spot. It's about a tax. But before you sit down, Councilman Baines and I were just discussing, when it comes to fighting crime, the possible use of predator drones. So we want you to put that on the, in the five-year budget, okay?
All right. I'm glad it came from you and not me.
Right.
Brianna, make sure you have that. That was Brando, not Dyer.
Print it up, Brianna. Thanks, chief. And you know what, chief? What I really like about your presentation is you know your department so well. It's very impressive. And I know you've got your executive staff and our other deputy chiefs back here helping you. But we appreciate how thorough you know your own department. That's, that's amazing.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah. So, city manager, there's been, I, I just want to throw this out because there is a conversation happening about a public safety tax, sales tax. And I know that we can't, we can't predict it. It would happen possibly in November. It's nothing that we're going to vote on when we pass this budget. But my question is really much more simple. Are the types of things that have been discussed today, like CSOs, like call dispatchers, and even possibly more sworn officers, are those the types of things that would be funded in a public safety tax? And I believe the mayor's working on that or considering bringing that forth. Is that, is the types of things that would be covered financially?
The, the administration has, has done some projections of what a spending plan might look like. And these are certainly a, a part of that spending plan because that would all be to, to augment public safety and, and to improve public safety. And so those would, would be on the list absolutely to, to be able to be funded. Because we're looking at, of course, not only the, the cost of, of putting those positions on, but, but the cost of those positions going forward. So yes, that would be part, in addition to some infrastructure improvements as well.
Okay. And then, so how would that work if that was passed in November? How would we begin to implement these additions?
Well, I am, am, this is conjecture, but I would assume then that the administration would bring back to the council a spending plan with, with revenue assumptions, et cetera, et cetera. But they would come back to the council with a, with a, with an expenditure plan for your approval, as far as how those monies would be spent, at least for the remainder of nineteen, and then it would be included as part of the budget for twenty.
So we would hypothetically, if there is a public safety tax, that's where we start, and if it's passed, we might see a mid-year, a very healthy mid-year appropriation of those funds.
Yes.
But what I wanted to clarify is that these are the types of things that, that could be covered in that public safety tax?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And...
One other thing, though, that I do want to point out as, as just a point of information, because I did do a, a back-of-the-napkin kind of calculation, is that with the addition of the twelve CSOs and the thirteen dispatchers, I, I believe was part of the motion, we are looking at somewhere around an ongoing cost in of about one-point-five to one-point-six million dollars. That does not include equipment, of course, for, for the CSOs. That is strictly only salary and some fringe. So those are the kind of expenditures that, that are ongoing because you don't want to add the positions and then just get rid of them. There's, there's, there's nothing to that. So that, those are the kinds of, of decisions that are really hard because you've got one-point-five million dollars. Now, what don't you fund in order to add those positions? And that's a very tough decision to make.
Well, and Councilman Chavez, what was the motion? Twelve CSOs? So was it something else or just twelve CSOs at this point?
And thirteen dispatchers, I believe.
Oh, so it was twenty-five positions that you're talking about? What does that mean? Oh, okay. All right. So it's, it's twelve CSOs and, and based on what the chief said, that's about six-hundred thousand dollars annually, right? For, for their salaries, for their...
Uh, as far as the CSOs, it's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-five thousand a year, I believe, chief, that you said, about sixty-five?
I think dispatchers are probably around sixty-five. CSOs are around fifty, start, fifty-five? Fifty-five for a CSO, about sixty-five for a dispatcher. Leave that variance. So somewhere in there.
Yeah. So we're probably looking somewhere around the, the one-point-five million-dollar mark.
Okay. And so my question to the administration then is, not talking about the tax again, if we don't have that tax, because all we can really vote on, we can't vote on the projections, right?
Right, correct.
So where would you come up with one-point-two to one-point-five million dollars?
Well, we would certainly have to go back and develop recommendations, but I don't know that there is any just one pot of money we can grab. There would have to be some sacrifice in services somewhere else in, in order for this to, to be added to the budget.
And it basically boils down to what council wants to cut. That's the bottom line.
Are you going to give us a list of things that we could cut?
We can, we can give you a list of potential things, but it, it's going to be deep. It, just that one motion alone is going to be deep. And we have to think about ongoing impact to the five-year budget. And again, and we talked about this before, the budget does not include a recession. And so that's why the mayor was very mindful. We sat, and this is just our first department, we sat with each department director and, and learned about the needs of each of the departments. And they're deep in every single department, and there's just not enough resources to cover those needs. And so, you know, we heard from chief, we're going to hear from Chief Donnis this afternoon, and then Parks. It just goes on and on and on. And so it, it just boils down to what you want to cut and ongoing and making sure that you're being fiscally responsible. And that's what the mayor's attempting to do.
And, and understand, it, it's not just one-point-five million this year. It's one-point-five million for the next umpteen years. So, so we're not just looking at one-point-five million for this year. We're looking at what you're going to permanently cut over the next five years to afford the seven million dollars it's going to take to fund it over the next five years.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Brettafield, and then, okay, you're okay. Per, seems like no one else has punched up. I do have to go out to the public on this? Did already did? Okay, I did, sorry. So we'll break for lunch. We'll be back in an hour. That way we wrap up. We have fi- Okay, we'll come back at one-thirty. Okay, we'll come back at 1:30. We'll go over our fire department, Parks, and then finance department. Thank you so much, chief.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, city manager.
So we will resume, and we're moving on to the fire department presentation.
Next on the list is the fire department, which starts on page B-65. Their primary funding sources include the general fund and grants. Total overall budget for the department is $69.3 million, which is a reduction of 2.9% from FY18 amended. Their general fund budget is $59.3 million, which is a reduction of 3% from FY18. Total permanent FTE positions in the budget are 376.5, which is a drop of 5.25 from FY18. Their total sworn positions in the budget is 334. The department's overall revenues are budgeted at $14.9 million, which is a decrease of $1.7 million from the FY18 amended budget. This decrease can be attributed to, one, a $649,600 reduction in grant revenues specifically to the completion of the SAFER-15 grant, and also a $425,100 decrease in other one-time grant revenues. The non-personnel budget totals $8.7 million, which is a decrease of $1.7 million from FY18. This decrease primarily reflects the reclassification of the department's fleet maintenance unit to now the newly created public safety fleet unit, again, under the transportation department. And in addition, there is also a $601,000 reduction in space rentals, and this is due to the planned purchase of the fire headquarters of this year. Now, partially offsetting these declines are additions to the non-personnel budget. One is $126,300 to pay for the department's FY19 lease obligations, $160,000 for Station 9 restroom remodel, $202,700 for departmental equipment needs, $223,300 added to fund major facility needs. $140,000 has been added to continue fitness and wellness testing. And lastly, $156,000 for the third year of the personnel protective equipment replacement program. In addition, there is $162,500 that's been budgeted for operating costs related to a drill school for 16 firefighter trainees. The interdepartmental budget totals $2.2 million, which is a $221,300 increase from FY18. This increase corresponds to $69,600 added for information services charges, $52,800 for new and replacement computer equipment, $97,800 added in liability self-insurance charges, and finally, $27,400 in charges for telephone services. Regarding their personnel budget, it totals $58.4 million, which is $604,400 decrease, primarily corresponding to the transfer, again, of their fire fleet unit to the public safety fleet maintenance unit. And again, that's in the transportation department. Within this transfer, there were nine positions of the fire fleet unit that now has been transferred over to the Department of Transportation. That is equivalent to $914,100 that then shifted over to the transportation department. Overtime is $358,500 above amended, and that's primarily to a $383,000 increase for labor costs related to the seven-week drill school. The total drill school budget is at $545,700. Workers' compensation is up by $328,600. And moving on to their personnel department budget, the budget includes a transfer of two fire prevention inspector twos from DARM and a community outreach specialist from the police department. Council president, that concludes my overall summary. Fire chief and departmental staff are here for your questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Brettafield. Okay, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment during this time? We'll bring it back to the dials. I have a couple of questions, chief, for you. And, you know, I know that earlier we had an opportunity to have, I think, a great conversation with our chief that explained the needs and the gaps that exist from the existing budget and then kind of the ideal situation and opportunities for this council to consider in terms of, you know, making our, or helping make our departments be a little bit more robust. But just from your perspective, to put you kind of on the hot seat right now, I know that obviously there's some investments that are being made. There's no significant increases that we see in the budget. I'm sure that, you know, as you probably see, you personally probably feel like, oh, you know, maybe we can get a little bit more. But what are some of those gaps that exist within the fire department where we can see? I know that we can probably start with staffing levels, right? Maybe if you can talk about where we're at today in comparison to recession and where we should be as the fifth-largest city with over half a million people?
Sure, sure. Thank you, council president, council members. Yeah, I'm happy to do that. This is a challenge for you, for the city manager and mayor's office. There's competing priorities and limited revenue, and that puts us all in a very difficult position to try and make those priorities in this budget. And I think that the city manager's team and the mayor did a very prudent job of putting that forward to you. And they were very receptive to listening to our proposals. That said, yeah, there's always gonna be need in this fire department, your fire department. The firefighting staff that we have today is 77 firefighters on duty for, you know, 520,000 people. To put that in perspective for you, which is the same information that I had shared, is that's .59 firefighters on duty each day per thousand. And pre-recession, we were at 82 firefighters on duty each day, and that would have put us at about .60, 61. The goal in the general plan, it's identified as to try and match what the state's industry average is, is .81 firefighters per thousand. It has been something that we've been talking about for many, many years, is that the city needs 100 firefighters on duty each day. Why do we pick 100? It's based on the population we serve, but also the call volume. This is a very, very busy fire department, and I don't just mean in running medical emergencies, it's also fire activity. So yesterday, we had 100-acre, just as an example, 100-acre grass fire that took three or four resources, then we had a half-acre grass fire, we had a two-alarm residential fire, we had a one-alarm commercial fire, and a one-alarm apartment fire. That was just one day. So this city sees an exorbitant amount of fire activity. It's been that way for many years. We're seeing nothing but increases. Over the last two years, snapshot, we have a 21% increase in fire calls and about an 8% increase in call volume overall.
In these incidents, the grass fires, are these related to weeds or what is it related to? What were the causes of these? Because I know we have an ordinance to address some of the...
Well, yes, we do. We do have a weed ordinance. It's hard to say. Yes, there are some that catch, the weeds haven't been mowed down, and there's ways to recoup costs on those if possible. But some other things, such as, you know, high weeds maybe along the roadway, could be along the freeway. Last year, we had a number of freeway fire, roadway fires due to high grasses and weeds. And I think Caltrans is trying to address those, maybe not as timely as we'd like, but we're moving in the right direction with those. So all that said, you know, this fire department needs, you know, eventually, at some point when there's enough funding, an investment in firefighters. We do have needs in civilian staff as well. But the firefighting staff at .59 isn't the standard I think the city wants to present. I think as funding becomes available, we need to definitely address that. To take us to .81 would require 115 firefighters to be hired. That would take us to the state average. To take us to .74 would be hiring 75 firefighters. So, you know, you're looking at a big lift, and it's not just, you can't just hire five...
Fifty, how many firefighters to get to .74?
Seventy-five. So when I say 75, that means you have three different shifts. So if you hire five more and take us to pre-recession levels, back to 82, when funding's available to do that. It's not just hiring five. You need five for each shift. That's 15 firefighters in totality.
And that will get us to...
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
On duty each day. So that's the, kind of, the 10,000-foot view. You know, our immediate concerns are, and have been, as we expressed, were the, trying to address all of the recommendations in the SART report. We are really pushing to move forward, again, as funding's available, to bring forward a safety officer on duty each day. That would improve our minimum daily staffing and address 15 out of the 166 SART recommendations with one position. And as well as our civilian staff. So that's kind of the...
What is the cost of the safety officer?
A safety officer, including a vehicle, is about $535,000 for a full year.
So that's just one safety officer?
No, it's three captains, one for each shift, and then the vehicle. So they would respond to every fire. They're also the on-duty infectious control officers, so when our firefighters are exposed to maybe a splash in the eye, a needle stick, some type of injury, they are the one that shepherds them to and from and manages the paperwork for their healthcare. They also initiate after-action reports, so our firefighters can learn from improvement opportunities out on the, in the fire ground. And so there's numerous duties that this safety officer does, and that's why it ticks off 15 of the 166 recommendations in the SART report.
So this would be one of the, you would recommend as a top priority from the SART report?
Yeah, definitely.
Going back to the question about the ideal staffing, what is the average cost of firefighter? Just so that we know what we're looking at in terms of, you know, total cost if we're looking at increasing and filling, you know, additional position?
The firefighter position, I'm gonna guess with roll-ups, about 130, 140? Let's just talk about a company. So a company has an engineer, a captain, an engineer, a firefighter, two firefighters, a four-person company. A company ongoing cost is about $2 million because you don't just need, you know, those four people, you need those four times three shifts.
Two million?
Two million. For a company.
That would be four...
Four people.
So, I believe Henry mentioned that there were, there's a drill school that you guys are putting folks through right now?
Yeah, we're hiring, right now, we're in the hiring process to bring forward a drill school in September, October of this year. That will be to fill attrition and position.
Oh, so it's just attrition?
Correct.
Not additional positions?
No, no.
How many positions do you...
We have 311 filled, we have 345. So a lot of the unfilled positions go to cover our overtime costs. Our, kind of, our unique position is we, our goal is to have a button every seat every day. We don't want to say it's okay to brown out a station, what we call brown out, meaning close a station, because we can't fill it and put someone in that position. It's not fair to our constituents and citizenry. So we have a mandatory process. We will force people back to work. It has worked very well over the last few years where we have implemented that, and we prepared that and worked in concert with Local 753 to enact that process.
So, and you were saying, so you started off with the safety officer. Are there other things that, from the SART report, or...
Well, sure, there's, you know, we have a need, we have an urban search and rescue team that is very robust. That team has gone to its tipping point where, with the requirements for the continuing education, both for heavy rescue and for water disciplines, is over and above what anyone should, is expected to do on an annual basis. So our goal is to split that team when positions are, become available in the budget, to add a firefighter to a current engine company, and split the heavy rescue team or urban search and rescue team and water team into two different disciplines. That would require adding a firefighter to the mix through a hiring process and a funding process.
Would that bring our minimum staffing levels up, or would that impact the minimum?
To do that, you would have to hire or fund three additional firefighters. We would add one firefighter per shift to a current existing engine company, and we would reassign all the firefighters that are gonna be on the water team to that designated station. That also includes specialty pay. So to do that, that's gonna be around $450,000.
And that's typical of what we see in other big cities in terms of how their teams are?
Yeah, this, our city, just the water discipline alone of the use our team runs about 200 water rescue calls a year. So there's a need to split that team just for the safety reasons for our members. To ask them to do 13 different certifications annually, which is, you know, over eight hours of CE, it's not even realistic to make that happen on an ongoing basis. So right now, we're, you know, a little bit behind in making sure that our folks are trained as they should be for the water discipline.
So that would be above the 13 certifications that folks have to have?
So we would split. The heavy rescue team would do about six certifications a year, and the water team would focus on their seven.
Oh, and so right now, they have to do all of them?
Yeah.
I'll seize my time right now and see what the other council members come up with in terms of questions. Councilmember Brenda.
Thanks, council president. Chief, a couple things. So we have 334 sworn positions budgeted for, and how many of the 334 are on the force now?
Filled are 311.
311?
311.
Okay. And then, and then I know we're having the school that you just referred to, will that make up the difference between the 334 and the 311?
That will make up some of it, but we are treading away probably about five a year.
Okay.
We just had, you know, several, I'd say two unexpected. So it's gonna make up some of the difference. It will fill some of the vacancies, so we'll have a little bit less overtime because those folks will go into a relief pool. And the relief pool fills vacancies on a daily basis at various ranks, so we don't have to hire a mandatory to fill that at an overtime rate.
Okay. Okay, so we lose maybe five a year through attrition on a normal year?
Correct, that is correct.
And then, Henry mentioned it, but what, so what, explain to me again, what's happening with the transfer to the transportation department? What's going on there? I can't, I can't remember.
Sure, so, the fire shop, before we had talked about building a new fire shop and then we went through that assessment, it wasn't cost-effective to do that. We, we moved our fire shop into Fleet over there at the MSC building. It's a much bigger facility and they're functioning pretty well there. And then eventually, they're going to expand even further once the Fleet moves out and has their own shop built, which that's in process now. And then those mechanics and the supervisor moved, are moving over to, to be underneath a Fleet umbrella, specifically under public safety.
Okay, so they're completely switching departments. There'll no longer be fire department employees, but there'll be transportation department employees?
That's correct.
But essentially, they're mechanics, though. They'd still be able to work on fire trucks?
Yes, they'll be specifically working on fire trucks and fire a small light fleet.
And then, what is the, what is the benefit, or maybe the city manager knows, what is the benefit of ship, shipping the personnel officially underneath transportation? Is there a savings or...
I think that the idea that was actually floated a couple of years ago by the former city manager is that we combine both the fire mechanics and the police, the individuals who work on, on, on police vehicles, and combine them into one so that they can, they can better utilize the equipment that, that they have and that they have a more unified supervision and be able to, to lean on each other and to utilize each other's resources instead of having two separate silos to bring them together so that they can work together as a team to, to keep track and, and to keep all of the public safety vehicles, whatever they may be, up and running and, and ready to go.
And has police already been transferred?
Yes, both of them have been transferred and I believe this is the first year or, or second year that they've actually functioned as a team.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Councilmember Brettafeld?
Hi, Chief. You mentioned a lot of different needs. You mentioned about the need for, I guess, 15 firefighters and then you're talking about a captain. I'm just curious, if there was like a million dollars available and you had to prioritize what the greatest need for this budget for your department would be, how would you request that money be spent?
Over and above what the, the city management has provided for us, which, you know, I have to give them credit for, you know, giving us what they did. I appreciate that. Our priority is a safety officer. And then to split the water team and add another firefighter to do that. I think the need in this city for increased revenues to really go forward and make the robust leaps that we're talking about adding 75 firefighters is going to take a different revenue stream. Ideally, the city needs to add another company. And then, once we get through that, a four-person company, then we want to add the squads, the two-person squads, to be a little bit more efficient in our service delivery. But for, right now, it's safety officer, splitting the water team and then adding at least a senior secretary to our, our support staff.
So, is the safety officer one firefighter?
The safety officer is three captains and a vehicle. That cost for a full year is about $535,000. And the water team, to split that off, would be to add three firefighters. Again, these are one per shift. And the specialty pay that goes with that team, that total is about $450,000.
So, the safety officer being three captains and then the water team being the three firefighters?
Correct.
And that brings it to about another... And then, question that I have for you. You and I talked a long time ago about somehow getting more revenue from when our firefighters go out on these medical calls. Right now, that got increased very small, as I recall. Is that correct?
It's a new fee. They implemented $6 per launch, if you will, for medical emergencies.
And that's derived from American ambulance?
Correct.
Okay, so, are other cities, do they charge people who are recipients of those services? I mean, what do other cities do? I know some of them have the paramedics, which we don't have, and they charge several hundreds, hundreds of, hundreds of dollars on every call. We obviously aren't doing that. But is there some way to generate more revenue on these calls? I imagine if somebody has a medical emergency, they have a heart attack, I don't think they're worried about spending more money in order to get their life saved. And I understand that firefighters are usually the first ones that arrive before American ambulance. Isn't that the case?
That's the case about, you know, 60, 40 percent of the time. There, there are a lot of other models. It's, there is one, we did a revenue, a fee study several years ago where the fire departments can charge a first responder fee to people where we, our services are provided. That's a, that's a policy call at, at this level, whether or not they want to implement that fee. There is a, a way, an avenue forward to make that happen. When it comes to the insurance companies, they will pay the first bill that comes in, if you will, when it comes to first responder. And there's a way to, you know, to secure those funds. But paramedics is another opportunity to do that. There's a lot of new legislation coming forward. It's called GEMT. And that's at the state level and they're, and they're doing a lot of litigation over that to allow fire departments to be able to compete and be a part of that revenue stream as well.
So, they, they do bill the insurance for the people who come first? Is that what you're saying? Or just any general first responder?
You bill for every call?
Every call, so it's American as well as the city of Fresno?
Yes, American does their own billing.
Right.
The challenge with that is we would have to somehow partner with American. They're the ones that are going to have the, the information. They do all of the data collection through their paramedics on scene. It can be done. It's being done in other, other departments throughout the country.
Okay.
But it's a matter of whether or not that's a fee we want to charge.
And do you know what that general fee is?
It could be anywhere from $50 to $125.
Okay, and $50 to $125 that the fire department would charge?
Correct.
And how many calls do you go on a year on the medicals?
Well, medical, over, that would be over 30,000. That's a really conservative number.
So, Jane, what is, what's that number, 30,000 calls and they charge $50 to $125 a call? I'll go to the numbers person.
That's about $3.7 million.
So, three...
That's assuming we get it all.
Of course, even if we don't get 3.7 all and we get $1.5 million, I'm, I'm not sure why we're not pursuing that. Is that city manager, is that something we've looked at? It's something I think we ought to look at? I think it's a reasonable charge when somebody's got a heart attack. They don't care who's coming, they just want somebody to save their lives. We go out on these calls and we're getting $6 a call. I mean, that's absurd to me, $6. We were getting nothing. Now, we're getting $6. So, we're moving in the right direction, but clearly not anywhere near when other cities do $50 to $125.
Yeah, and I'm happy, I'm happy to work with the chief and look at that and look at best practices and bring something back if it's, if it's something reasonable and the mayor is interested in pursuing it.
Okay, well, I think we, as a council, ought to pursue it. If the mayor's not willing to pursue it, we, as a policy body, ought to pursue this because we're providing the service to our constituents. It's a great service. We are saving lives. The fire department is saving lives every day. And we're getting $6 for a call. And I can assure you that I think we're spending more than $6 to send people out and fire trucks and everything else. We ought to be getting $50 to $125 a call. So, we're leaving a lot of money on the table. City attorney, is there some way, I, I'm not sure what the process would be, but I'd like to bring something forward as a policymaking body where we can initiate this and make it a formal situation. I'd like to work with the mayor to make this happen. But I, I think we need to get past talking about it. It's a service that we're providing every day, 30,000 calls a year. And we're leaving a lot of money on the table to provide for additional firefighters, to improve our firefighting equipment, to provide, what are, what are those little vans that you, the medical vans?
Squads.
Squads, okay, and we're not utilizing those now. So, these are squads that we can be sending out as opposed to the fire trucks that are going out and utilizing a lot of mileage and wear and tear. This is the direction we ought to be going. And so, council, I put that out there. City attorney, I'd like to talk to you about bringing a policy forward where we do this. I know we got to do a little more research on this. I hope the mayor wants to be involved in this.
And I want to interject. We're happy to look at it. I think that we need to look at everything it entails. Collecting it, whether or not our constituents are going to be able to pay for it, you know, what other cities are doing, et cetera. So, I am happy to look into it and report back.
Yeah, all of that. We want to research all of it. But I think we shouldn't just ignore it and other cities are doing it and we're providing the service and we're not getting any real reimbursement for it. So, having said that, we'll move forward with that. And then, I'd just like to make a motion for discussion later that in terms of what you had said, the safety officer involving three captains and the, for the water team, three firefighters, I'd like to make a motion to move that forward in the budget.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and put that on the hopper.
Yeah, if I'm saying correctly. You had mentioned a safety officer that involved three captains and for the water team, it involved three firefighters. Generally equaled about almost a million dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that right? That's, that's what it involved? Yes.
So, there's a motion in a second. We'll put that in the hopper and we'll discuss it at a later, later point. Councilmember Baines?
Thanks, Council President. Hey, Chief, good afternoon. And forgive me if I ask some questions that have already been answered. I know I came back to the hearing a few minutes late, so I'm just going to apologize upfront right now. But I want to pick off or pick up, rather, where Councilmember Brettafeld left off about, about these service calls. So, I want to understand this a little bit more and maybe I don't understand it to the degree I need to. So, this is probably the time for me to do that. What types of calls are we charging for? Help me understand that.
So, the county goes out to bid every five years for who provide, who gets the contract to provide paramedic services. And American ambulance won that contract. As part of this year's contract, it requires that that, American, if you will, must pay all fire departments $6 per call and then it goes up by, you know, 3% a year for every call that they are launched on that are priority one. Priority one medicals are the most life-threatening emergent, medical emergencies we have, like chest pain, difficulty breathing, et cetera. So, we go on those. We go on priority ones only at this time. But back when the recession happened and we closed rigs, we used to, prior to that, we used to go on priority one and priority two. That's about, at the time, 10,000 more calls per year.
So, so this fee, $6, is paid by American ambulance to us?
Correct.
Okay, so we, we kind of perform like a contract service for them in this situation? And who sets this, who sets the rate?
That was a discussion we had had with the county, wanting to be more involved in the contract. And, you know, we, we, of course, wanted to push for a higher rate. But the, the feeling was that the, the citizenry in the Fresno County couldn't, can't afford what was the, can't afford that much of an increase, whether it be $50 per call or $100 per call.
What was it before it was 6 to you?
Zero.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for ever.
That's what, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, the, the standard now across the state is that for these types of calls, there's generally a fee associated with that?
I can't speak to other, what other counties are doing. It's something that we wanted to at least insert in this round of contract discussions that the fire department helps assist the contract provider in mitigating that emergency. Otherwise, the contract provider would have to add dozens and dozens of more ambulances or staffing to help package the patient.
No, I absolutely, and, and it's smart to, to have you all augment, augment that. That, I, I totally get that. I guess I'm more interested in the, how the fee's derived and probably, probably that discussion. And sadly, I didn't, I didn't know, how long has this been going on?
This is the first year.
Okay, I want to, I, I feel like I've been, I'm completely out of the loop in that. I don't feel so bad now since it's the first year we've done it. So, let me just, let me just say this, that I completely agree with Councilmember Brettafeld, that we probably should examine this, particularly if our, if the fee, if the, if there's a quote-unquote industry standard, and I use that term loosely here. But if there's an industry standard that we are, you know, severely below, then yeah, obviously, we, we should look at that. So, I'd be interested, interested to hear what the, what the outcome of that is. So, thank you for the clarity and for understanding that. I want to now kind of switch gears a little bit to the, the needs of the fire department. And I, I know that I've listened to my colleagues, colleagues ask a few questions and I got some answers. But I want to make sure I understand things a little bit better. So, as I understand it, you believe that if we wanted to have our fire department fully functioning, we'd need 100 extra firefighters. Is that right?
I, I would say our goal should be today, with today's population and call volume, should be to have 100 firefighters on duty each day.
What is that, okay?
That would require to hire at least another 75 firefighters.
Okay, I got it. And so, right now, right now, you, we're, our fire department's authorized for 334 positions, right? And we're talking sworn right now. I don't think we're...
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not to the civilian portion just yet. And we have 311 that are, that are filled, so we, we're short 23. We have 23 vacancies that we're holding right now.
And those vacancies help, help supplement our, the overtime that's required to fill vacancies on an ongoing basis, on a daily basis. So, we have no relief pool right now. And that requires at times, we need to hire an overtime or a mandatory to make sure we have a person in every seat on every apparatus 24 hours a day.
So, let me ask you, we're at 311, we're authorized for 334. Is it the goal to get to 334?
I don't, I don't think it's the goal to get to 334. I think there should be an increase, which is what this drill school's intended to do, is take us to about, let's say, no one retired. It would put us at about three, three, and three in the relief pool. Three engineers, three captains, three firefighters on, that are in the relief pool each day. That relief pool, when someone calls in sick, they go on vacation, they're injured, we pull from the relief pool and we assign them to those stations, which, which means we don't have to pay an overtime to hire someone. So, I think it's important to have a good balance of a relief pool, but not to the point where we don't have, we, we don't want to be having what we say, extra people on duty.
So, so if, so you're going to have to help reconcile this with me now?
Yeah.
So, if, if the, if the goal is not to get to 334, but we need 75 more, how does that work exactly?
Well, if the goal would be to get to 334, that means we would have other positions to put them in, in the field. So, you'd want to have open companies. You would want to open positions where you could place those new firefighters and increase the number of full FTEs. You'd want to be able to put them in the field and not just plow them into a relief pool.
So, how, so how do we, so how do we arrive at the... So, so what you're saying is if we were going to, so let's just say, you know, we're pretending today that we all have magic wands and unlimited amount of money. And we were able to say, okay, we want 75. We want to authorize 75 new positions for firefighters. So, you go from 334 to just over 400, what, 409 or something like that? If, if we did that, would it be the goal? You would need to open up new companies, is what you're saying?
Oh, yeah.
In order to put them someplace?
Yes.
Okay, so, so how many companies would you, would you need?
Well...
Because I, I, and I'm asking this, Chief, so, so the council can understand a better picture of when you're saying what your needs are, what that really translates to. I don't think, I, I know right now, as I'm talking it out loud, I don't completely understand it. So, what 75 firefighters really means is X number of companies or what have you. This is what it really means. It's not just bodies that we're going to shove into this organization as it exists. You would need to expand some companies or what have you. I'm assuming...
So, the city, as it's grown, we need to increase our resources, our service delivery model when it comes to both engines, trucks... model when it comes to both engines, trucks, and squads. And you don't necessarily have to open new stations to do that. There are some areas of the city where that's going to be a necessity, particularly in the southeast and in the south. Also relocating Station 18 has been on the burner for some time and that has to get opened at some point, but that's not adding new positions because we're just relocating the current staffing. You're going to, you're looking at a model that's going to be a blend of both opening companies, meaning truck companies or engine companies, but also adding the squad model, where I park a squad, a two-person company, next to an engine or a truck or both at a station. And that squad runs primarily medical calls all day long, leaving the engine and truck parked, saving on maintenance, saving on fuel, saving on the wear and tear of an 80,000-pound piece of equipment that wasn't intended to run 15 calls a day. So you have the squad running 15, 20 calls a day, mostly medical calls, but they also are firefighters, so they can go to a fire call if they need to.
So along, so you, you really are describing the, the capital needs a, as well as the actual personnel needs. So as we, as we see that, the, you would essentially extend the life of the engines.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, if you were, if you were to do that.
For sure. I think the, you know, the, the question you're asking of where do you put 75 people, really, it's, it's 25 more on duty each day. It's, it's not 75 on duty. So it'd be 25 more on duty each day. And, you know, there's definitely, we need to open a company. We talked about a safety officer. We talked about, you know, adding a third person to the water company. Then we want to implement these squads. That's two people times three shifts. It's, it can get very confusing. And so it's more of a, you would need more of a plan and a workshop and saying, this is how you apply those firefighters to have that mass introduction into our system. But that's coming, honestly, with a revenue stream that can afford to do that.
Yeah, but, but, you know, we, we, we should know what that looks like.
I'm happy to share that, that vision.
Well, Council President, I'm, I'm going to ask that we, we find a way to make that happen expeditiously. I don't know if you come back during budget hearings or what have you, but, you know, Councilmember Brandau has mentioned a couple of times about the robust discussion that's being had around this city about the investment in public safety and parks and what have you. And I think for the council to get a clear picture of what this investment really is, I mean, I think we, we, we need to have, because I don't quite understand.
Councilmember Baines, if I may interject. I, I would like to see if we can have that during this budget discussion, because I think what we do today or over the next couple of weeks is going to impact us to kind of how we plan out to be able to kind of get to the ideal point. And we have to have those conversations. Maybe we don't have it, the total amount that we need in the budget, but we have to figure out, you know, other revenue sources to be able to get us there. It's not enough that we vote on this budget and then forget about, about it until next year. You know, there is really, I think that this is an opportunity that we need to take into account what you guys are saying and, and do something about it. So I would like to, you know, maybe you prepare something and we can have it as part of our budget discussion still. Could we still do that, even though it's not, it would be agendized?
Well, I think the, the spending, the money that would be raised from this fee would be part of the budget. Otherwise, we're probably looking at a master fee schedule change as far as adding this fee or raising this fee.
Well, well-
I think it's more the model and the structure.
Yeah, right.
So that we understand the cost.
Yeah, just to, just to really kind of hone in on what I think the chief is, is saying. And there may be a way, Chief, I don't, you know, that you could come back and we can do this during budget hearings, because I, I do agree that it'd be a good time to look at it, particularly now with the, all the discussions swirling about this building and everywhere else. But it would be good for us to see what the ideal fire department would look like. And, and it is complicated. It's not, it's not quite as linear as, say, the police department when, you know, when somebody says, well, I'm going to hire 20 new officers. We can all kind of envision where they're going to go, right? I mean, it's a little, it's a little simpler in, in that sense. This is a slightly different formula. And it probably does, it probably does require us to, some, some visual aid to, to, to show that to us. So if you're willing and the council president is willing and my colleagues are willing, I'm, I'm probably going to cede my time here and see if there's a way to really invite you back and have you give us that overview, one that I've never had since I've been a council member here for seven years, frankly, which would, which would be important from my perspective. So, Council President, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to cede my time and hopefully we can figure out a way to get the chief back and, and actually see what that looks like during our budget discussion. Thank you.
City Attorney, so do we, because we've set the schedule for the budget, how do we make that happen at a, I guess, at a later hearing?
Well, the, the schedule provides, as far as noticing the budget discussions, is that you can take any issue at any time. So that's really up to you.
So would it be okay if you maybe bring it back the following week and we could talk? Do we need to make a motion or?
No, you could give direction or ask a question that-
Yeah, if, you know, I think that there's a sentiment up here that we'd like to see a, a better picture to understand. I know that there's shifts and number of people to be able to get to that 100 number. And I think it's, it'll be good for not only us, but for the public to understand, you know, how do we get there and what types of resources we're going to need to be able to get to that, that number. So if maybe we could get you to come back next week. Let me see, what, what do we have? Either next Monday on the 11th and you could, you know, after we go over the other ones, the other departments, you could present-
Sure.
-that information? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Brenda.
All right, Chief. And I, and I'm going to look forward to that conversation when we have the, the full department presentation. But I want to go back to the fee a little bit so I can kind of think about that, Councilman Brettafeld's motion. The fee increase, is, does that have to be negotiated with American Ambulance and the county, or how would we increase that fee?
That's a policy decision.
From council? Okay, so it doesn't have to be, and then in turn negotiated with the county's contract for paramedic calls?
No. What it would look like, and a really quick snapshot, is you, the city, we somehow, an entity, which is another fee, to pays a company to send bills, invoices to those folks that have realized our services at, at a fire call, or I'm sorry, at a medical call. And there's a process of recouping that money. And if it, a lot of times, you know, it, it doesn't happen.
Right. I, I wanted to talk about that for a second. So I know you grab a lot of stats from the different types of calls that we go on. Have we ever traced how many people that we serve that, that have insurance during those, those calls?
There is a, a number out there, and I'm truly taking a, a kind of a swag here. About 20% have private insurance, that, those are the ones that are going to pay the fee automatically. That's, you know, if, if you are conservatively, maybe 30, 35% of all of the, the runs we go on might be payable.
Okay. And then, so there's been some cases where we haven't even recouped the $6 fee? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, no, we get that through American. But if we were to do this on our own, Medicare, Medicaid, they're not going to pay for, for that fee.
Right. It's very interesting. So we send our fire department out on calls that we don't get, that we're essentially not recouping, not even close to the amount of money for the resources spent. Right?
Well, and, and if you don't mind, Councilmember Brenda, I, I view this in, through two, through two minds. On, on the one hand, I certainly don't mind if our citizens call our fire department and we respond, I'm okay with them not being, it's like a police call, right? So that's fine. But if American Ambulance is being paid a fee from the county and we're being, and our fire department is augmenting that service with them, I view that a little differently than just a normal fire call, because American Ambulance actually is getting paid-
Right.
-you know, through the contract to do this work. And our fire department is helping them fulfill the terms of their contract. So I, I want to just kind of segregate the conversation a little bit. For a normal fire call, I don't, yeah, our, our citizens shouldn't be called, they pay taxes already. But for this American ambulance contract, it, it is worth a discussion and I'd like to find out more about it. So-
Yeah.
Just to kind of-
No, I agree, because American Ambulance isn't doing this for $6.
Right.
And so, yeah, it's very interesting, Councilman Capriolio, and I don't know if you've punched up, but Councilman Capriolio and I have talked about this over the years, probably it's been several years now where we talked about, you know, the responsibility of who goes out on the calls and the, the need, the need for fire to go out on calls is, is, is a good starting place. But, but I don't think that sending them out on that call for $6 is that responsible. So I'm, I'm interested in that whole conversation. And so, yeah. All right, thank you, Chief.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out too, is that it wouldn't just be the cost to, to actually go out on the call, but there would also, of course, have to be an expense for collecting the money and, and managing the money. And so it's not just as simple as just sending out a bill and then they, they send back payment, because as the chief pointed out, a good chunk of these individuals don't have insurance. And so I don't know what other mechanism we would have to try to recoup that money. And then you're talking about collection efforts and whether or not they're actually worth going out and trying to collect the money from citizens for, for fire calls. So it would just-
Or paramedic calls.
There would be some additional expense beyond just, just the expense for the fire department to actually collect this money, as, as it is with any collection of money.
But wouldn't, wouldn't the fees that we would be trying to collect would cover the expense of the collection?
So the fee would have to be set not only to cover the fire call, but also the, for, for that collection. And I don't know what that amount would have to be, but it would have to be costed out so that we are ensuring that we are covering the cost, not just of the fire service, but also the collection of that fee.
Well, I would just be interested to see if we could collect anything. We're already not collecting anything beyond the $6. So anything beyond $6 will help us regardless, right?
I just, I, I just, if I could jump in here, there's a couple of things. There's some other options, maybe we can talk about those two, you know, in the totality of this conversation, you know, outside this venue. But, you know, it's just the optics of your citizenry is going to be calling you saying, why am I getting a bill when I pay taxes for the fire department on top of, you know, what I already pay? Why do I have to pay another $50, $80 fee because they came out and helped me in my time of need? That's why I pay taxes. That's the optics that other cities have had to work through. Not that that's not, you can't overcome that, but that's something you'll have to consider as you bring this, you know, option forward.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I just want to say, I, I want to highlight the difference in this. This is, from my, from my standpoint at least, a, a contract issue with American more than, more than our constituents. American charges the constituents that they respond to a fee. So they're contracting us for that service. I know you're talking about the optics of how it would look, but when they contract us, it, it either, if basically if we don't charge anything, we literally are augmenting their contract for them for free. So that's a complete, that is a completely different discussion, in my mind at least. The normal fire call that our constituents, when they call us and we respond, yeah, I don't think we shouldn't charge them for that. But this is a business model for American and it's definitely in, in their interest if, to, to have us show up on a call where, that they get paid, you know, paid for and we charge them nothing. So like I said, the, the, the issue is slightly nuanced and I know in the mind of the citizen, they probably would not see the difference. But, you know, obviously, this is a business decision we got to make. So we just need to find out more about it.
Yeah, and you know, it's very interesting when we talk about the mind of our citizens, I don't think they probably know all of this stuff. So they think of our fire department responding to fires. We're not really talking about that right now. We're talking about the paramedic calls, right? I would, so Chief, when we revisit this bigger issue of the fire department, when Council President puts it on the agenda, I would like to, I would like to include a conversation that at least begins with, should Fresno Fire be responding to paramedic calls? Okay, so I know that's different than some of my colleagues, but I want to start there and see what that, what that looks like. I know we've got a huge investment into paramedic calls apart from fire. I don't need to discuss the firefighting calls. I just want to talk about the, the paramedic calls and start there and take a deep dive onto what that looks like, all of our costs for that. So, because we're actually, you know, we're talking about, Council President, you talked about increasing resources. So this stuff's going to get even more expensive if we put more bodies into this part. Of course, that's, you were talking mostly about firefighters, but I do want to completely understand the whole paramedic versus fire calls situation, so.
And I think this is where kind of maybe these squad units that I know, like Councilmember Capriolo has talked about and you guys have talked about in, in years prior, where there may be an opportunity. I'd like to see if maybe you can come back also on Monday as part of looking at the overall picture. Where are there opportunities? Because I'm sure that you guys can go and map out in the city of Fresno where you guys get the majority of those medical calls. Where does it make sense that we put some of these squads to be able to address maybe and lower some of the costs, because then we don't have to use the big trucks and, and so forth? So as part of your presentation, maybe if you can come back as well to see where in, in the city and, you know, is, is it a pilot program that we implement to see if we could both do some cost savings and opportunities to invest?
I think those are it. Councilmember Capriolo, did you have anything?
No, we're just-
Okay. Perfect. I think that's it. So we'll see you Monday again, next Monday. Thank you. Next, we have our Parks Department.
The Parks Department can be found starting on page B-93. Its primary funding sources is also the general fund and grants. Total overall budget is 27.4 million. That is a 6.7 increase above FY18 amended. Their general fund budget is almost 15 million and its budget has increased by 2.8% over FY18. Total permanent FTE positions is 75.75, which is an increase of .75 from FY18. The department's overall revenues totaled 9.4 million in the budget, which is about 2.4 million above, I'm sorry, below FY18 amended budget. This decrease primarily reflects a 1.5 million reduction that corresponds to the department's completion of improvement projects in FY18 at various parks and neighborhood centers, including Dicky, Mariella Brown, Highway City, Masqueta Center, Frank H. Ball, and Chandler Park. In addition, there was a decrease of 139,900 related to charges for services as well. And lastly, transfers decreased by 368,700 due to savings being realized due to citywide refinancing of bond debt. The department's non-personnel budget totals 14.2 million, which is an increase of 854,900 from the amended budget. Of that, 121,600 was added for janitorial services. This was due to a change in the service being provided. In prior years, the janitorial services contract was managed and paid for by facilities management. In FY19, the department will handle that contract independently. In addition, 400,000 was added to the utilities line item in order to better match what we're seeing for current activity. In addition, 215,000 was added to maintain the department's current level of services. The department's internal depart, interdepartmental budget totals 3.8 million, which is an increase of 511,000 compared to the FY18 amended budget. This increase- This increase corresponds to nine, ninety-one thousand four hundred due to information's system service charges, seven hundred and fifty thousand increase for the construction of a splash pad at Melody Park, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred reduction to the facilities management. Of that, a hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred decrease was due to this janitorial contracts change. The department's personnel budget totals nine point four million, which is three hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred increase from the FY18 amended budget. And of this increase, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand relates to the temporary staff that includes minimum wage increases expected to take effect January first of two thousand nineteen. In addition, there's seventy-nine thousand four hundred for four-year funding for a community recreation supervisor position that was approved by council in FY18. And lastly, there is one position, a project manager, that has been added to the budget with an effective date of October one. The position cost is seventy thousand one hundred. That concludes my overview. And again, the department director and departmental staff are here for your questions.
Perfect, thank you. Henry, just a question to follow up on the seventy-nine thousand four hundred. Where's the community recreation supervisor located? Do you know what park?
Inspiration. Inspiration. That is under Inspiration Park.
Okay, just wanted to double check, thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Soria. Parvin, quick questions as you're walking up. First of all, I thank you and your team, guys have done an amazing job this past year with Carnival, with Senior Spring Fling, with all the events that we have over at, at Mosqueta. So, I wanna, I wanna thank you and your, your, your amazing team.
Yes, sir.
Guys do a great job. I just had a quick question on page B-97. I know there's an explanation on the decrease. Were, were those four projects that were budgeted the past previous budget cycle, and now we've expended them, is that the explanation for the decrease?
Sir, I'm gonna defer to, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Karen, who's responsible for our budget.
Okay. Alright, Karen.
Okay, so you're looking at the non-personnel charges, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, page B-97, top left paragraph, the decrease in the, in the dollar amount.
Okay.
Councilmember Chavez, are we referring to the revenues?
Correct.
Reduction of a million five?
Correct.
And that's correct. Those are the completion of projects in FY18.
So, that would entail like the splash park that we did at Vinland, the Mosqueta one, and all the other different projects?
The Mosqueta, correct.
Is that the one, those are the ones?
The grants is really what it is, it's related to that.
Okay.
So, you get revenues back for those.
Got it. I, I just wanted to make sure that that's what, that's what that, that's what that was. Thank you, thank you for that, appreciate it. Other question to add.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you. On B-97, it talks about a four hundred thousand dollar increase in utilities, and it seems like it's water consumption. I just had a general question as to status of Purple Pipes, if the administration knows, or we're trying to figure out a way to get really inexpensive water to our facilities to keep that cost down, which equals more program money and stuff like that. So, I don't know where we are in Purple Pipes.
Councilmember, I know that I've been working with the, with the Water Division, and they are very, very close to being able to bring water, recycled water to Roding Park. They're doing some final testing now, there's been some challenges out there that they've overcome, and that they're also looking at how to expedite delivering water to Woodward as well, although that's a little bit more problematic just because of the great distance that's, that's involved. So, at least in the case of Roding, we do have a, a good handle on that, and we do hope to be able to, to achieve that probably within the next month. But as far as the other, as far as the other parks are concerned, obviously, that's going to have to depend on how quickly we can get the pipe installed, and those are very large projects, and, and will, and will take some time. So, we will still need these appropriations for, for water usage for, for the time being.
I thought we had Granite Park in line for Purple Pipes as well.
I believe that's on, on the list, yes.
It is, it's on the list.
Yeah, it's absolutely on the list.
I thought of the back portion, more toward Dakota, was a perfect area for pumping and the whole...
I can check with DPU and see.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, that's not a problem.
That's just waiting to be developed. I get calls all the time for soccer fields and different things there. And so, we'd love to get Granite Park at maximum capacity. That's all I had, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So, I think no one else has punched up. I do have a couple of questions. And I also just wanted to, Parvin, just give you an opportunity. We, we gave, you know, the Chief of Police and our Fire Chief an opportunity to talk about some of the ideal scenarios. And I know Parks has been one of the departments that, ever since the recession, was probably the most impacted in terms of staffing and, and resources. I wasn't here when that happened, but I guess I'd like to hear from your perspective. Where should the city of Fresno be in terms of resources? If, you know, we could wave a magic wand and we could get all these dollars, where would the opportunities be so that we can kind of get us back to pre-recession levels?
Well, Council lady, thank you for the opportunity, and again, Council members, I'm very appreciative of this opportunity. I, I, I will say, you know, I've, I've had an opportunity to be here in the city of Fresno roughly seven and a half months. I, I said, "Man, that's a long time here as, as a director here," and I'm very appreciative of it. But what, some of the things I've, I've noticed, you know, in, in our Parks Department is that just the, there's the struggle of plan maintenance, you know, in, in parks. I, I, I can tell you, and I always mention to Tony this, is that park maintenance is valuable to any Parks Department. When people, they enter your city, the first thing they see, they see their parks. The first thing they see are green spaces, and the first thing they wanna know is how you're maintaining those parks and how you maintain those parks to what degree. I, I will say that with Tony, you know, his, his division, you know, he has roughly over thirty, about thirty-four, thirty-five FTEs here. Now, previous, my previous employers, this is one of the smallest plan maintenance departments, divisions I've ever had to manage, I will tell you that. I've managed up to about eighty FTEs in the city of Durham. And so, and we have roughly about seventy-four, seventy-five parks mainly. I, I will say that I know that we're really looking for a park ma, a park supervisor. If we could, if I could have a wish list right now, it would be a park supervisor, one. A park supervisor, two. Really, three lead workers would be, you know, ideal as well. We talk a lot about irrigation here in this city, and, and I think that's vital that we continue adding more irrigation employees under Tony's leadership. Also, two labors would be ideal, if I could have my, my wish list. And also, one electrician would be ideal for me. Now, we talk a little bit about how much it would, the salary would be for a supervisor, one. You're looking at about eighty thousand dollars. Just, that's just for a one. Two would be roughly about ninety-six thousand dollars. So, you know, those are some rough numbers. The next area I'd like to...
Sorry for the interruption. Does that include benefits and everything? Okay, so the total package of the costs?
Total package, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It does not, however, include equipment.
Does not include equipment.
For a truck, or equipment, or materials, or anything of that. That's strictly the position.
Yeah, so maybe we'll get there. Okay, thank you.
So, plan maintenance. The next step would, if I could have another area, obviously more, more program services in referencing youth job programs here, you know, in this city. You know, I, you know, Council lady, I had an opportunity, you know, I grew up like many of our children and teens. I didn't have a lot growing up, and what I did have was a father that specialized in brick masonry, that specialized in construction. And why not have an opportunity to teach and train our children on how to be one day a brick masonry, or, or as electrician, or get into agriculture? And year to day, I can tell you I can still lay a little brick now due to my father and his training, you know, for me, and I'm very proud to say that. And so, if I could have anything, it would be probably, you know, funds set aside to not only develop youth and trade programs, but also educate our kids on importance of becoming the next culinary star, becoming the next electrician. And I, and I have seen many children graduate from a student trading program and obviously obtain jobs, obtain city jobs. And so, for me, that would be probably a number, number two priority for me as, as a director, kinda set aside funds to do that. The next area would, would be a park ranger program. I'm very adamant, I've been very adamant about that throughout my career. I had a, had the privilege to have a park ranger program when I was the City of Miami Gardens as the director there, and, you know, we were really experiencing a lot of vandalism in our parks. We were, you know, we just could not keep control of the vandalism in our parks. We were not able to open and close restrooms throughout the night. We received thorough complaints referencing issues and vandalism graffiti throughout our parks. And many times, my staff would be put in a place to address issues in your parks, or in my parks. And so, I think having a ranger program would not only assist my staff and also reduce the complaints that we get. Probably, I think we'd probably get about sixty percent of our complaints is regarding issues regarding vandalism in parks. I will tell you that.
I'm gonna interject too. So, I just wanna point out as well that we spent, Mayor and Tim and, and, you know, our entire team spent a lot of time with parks, listening to all of their needs, et cetera. And we packaged up the best thing that we thought to move the parks forward, right? Continue ongoing programming and maintenance, and the additional O and M costs we talked about during the carryover. And that's packaged and represented to you. So, and I, and I, Parvin could stand here all day and go over all kinds of needs. So could each and every one of our directors, but, you know, and Parvin, I appreciate all of that. But again, what we've put forward is the best package that we could to be fiscally responsible, making sure that we weren't able, that we're able to maintain current level of services.
Thank you. Councilmember Beans.
Thanks, and, and I wanted to follow up on the park ranger, 'cause I'm, I'm curious in how that actually works. But I wanna just tell Wilma and Jane specifically, our City Manager, Assistant City Manager, we, we know that, and, and every year, we totally understand that the staff puts together a budget. We get that. And what I would remind you all is that we don't sit in on any of those meetings, and we don't hear any of that until we get here.
And, and I can appreciate that.
So, so we ask these questions because we, we haven't had the eye level view that you've had. So, but we do understand that you all have heard all of this already, and you've packaged us the best that we can possibly do. And, but just know that from our perspective, we gotta, we gotta hear it too. So, Parvin, on the, the park ranger program, I've heard a lot about park ranger programs. Help me understand how they actually function a little bit, and, and this is not in any way, Councilmember Soria's gonna go right back to you, but I do wanna have him just dive down a little bit. And how do they, how does that work with the law enforcement function? 'Cause it's, I wanna just know how does, you know, is it run out of the police department? Is it run out of Parks Division or whatever?
Well, let me just say, you know, Councilmen, from a benchmarking standpoint, Los Angeles County obviously have their ranger program as well. Sacramento, I wanna say they have an exceptional park ranger program as well. And so, the rangers are not armed. Let me just, let me just say that, let me just be clear about that. The rangers are not armed. A lot of times, I utilize my rangers to report violence in parks and ensure safety, you know, in parks for our citizens, that's one. We, I, I will tell you, and I have to go back to previous past as well, is that we had, in City of Miami Gardens, we had one of the largest football programs in the state of Florida. I manage about four thousand participants, over five hundred coaches. And so, my rangers helped a lot with parking and also just ensuring that the parking was aligned with our, with, with the games as well. They're also responsible just for reporting out crimes to the police department, you know, as well. And they're not, in some cities, you, you know, they, they're odd station to give tickets, and they, and they do act as code enforcers, you know, in some cities. In addition to that, they report out any illegal sporting activity. What I normally utilize my rangers for, you know, obviously here, you know, under Cal's Division, we have a lot of sporting events, and, and they would actually serve as security officers or serve as police officers, just kinda walk the premises just to ensure safety, you know, among our participants as well. And so, they really helped out, you know, in, in a lot of ways in parks. And, you know, when we get complaints, my park ranger supervisor manager would notate those complaints, and obviously report those complaints back to me, and we will put measures together and also address those complaints as well. We also had issues with just opening, closing restrooms. You, you're gonna have those, especially when you don't have a lot of staff. And so, they were responsible for closing those restrooms and also closing the gates in, in your parks as well. And so, you can use them for a lot of great...
Do they have, like, police radios, or they...
Absolutely, they have walkie-talkies, police radios. We, obviously, you know, in the future, security cameras would be ideal, you know, for our parks. And, and so, they obviously was connected with the police department to look and monitor the parks as well. And so, they also have their own cars allotted as well.
Thank you. So, I wanted to follow up on the couple of things that, that you mentioned, Parvin. So, like many of us here on, on this council, and I know a number of us supported the creation along with the mayor, I think over the last now two years, monies for a summer paid internship here in the city of Fresno.
Absolutely.
I will say that I haven't seen it implemented as much as I would like to. So, for folks hearing me out there, and I know that I've talked to the, the City Manager, there are opportunities for our department, our managers and so forth, to actually hire young people to do internship programs. Just like you, I'm very passionate about creating these job opportunities for young people. My first paid job was working for the Public Works Department in the city of Lindsay. That's where I grew up, and so, I was a sophomore in high school. That made a difference in, in, in where I'm at today, I believe. And so, those jobs, I think, and those opportunities are critical. I will say that the Parks Department does a tremendous amount of work already and does a fabulous job in doing the job prep program. But my big question always has been, so what happens after we provide job prepping for these kids, right? We know that a lot of the fast food restaurants and so forth are not hiring a lot of these young people, which used to be the case before. They're hiring people with more, more experience, older, and so forth. So, we wanna give these young people, so I would like to see, I know that the, the administration mentioned that there are some opportunity this, in this budget, which is minimal, twenty-five thousand dollars to continue doing the, the paid summer program. But I'd like to see how we can, you know, invest a little bit more, because I do see jobs as an effective tool to reduce crime, make sure that we're teaching our young people skills that will benefit them for the future and them being productive citizens in the city of Fresno. So, I guess I'm, I'm curious, you know, really, I know that you, you've talked more about investing in kind of like trades or more, what, what kind of program did you?
Vocational.
Vocational. And I think that there's opportunities to work with our educational institutions. I know that there's a lot of conversation already around that. I know that my colleague here, sitting next to me, has been talking about, you know, this issue of jobs and economic development and really alleviating some of the major problems that we have in the city of Fresno, which is poverty. And the way that we do it is by giving people an opportunity. And I think starting them young is a great way to be able to combat a lot of the systematic problems that we have within some of our neighborhoods that have the greatest need. So, I know that we have money, a little bit of money, and I hope that, as folks are hearing me, that we are able to, hopefully in this summer, and use up as much money that was put. I think we had about twenty-plus thousand, I don't know if you guys, for this last... I think we had about twenty-plus thousand, I don't know if you guys, for this last summer. I don't know how much is still left over. Do you remember?
Yes, I think about twenty thousand.
Yeah, so, so there's opportunity. I know my office has benefited councilmember Baines and there is a couple other departments, but I really encourage departments. I, I spoke to you earlier a couple weeks ago. I hope that you guys put in, there was over two hundred kids that applied for a job. So I hope that we are opening the doors, you know, for them to come and be in our, in our budget office, you know, in our public works department, in our, you know, part of the maintenance. I remember when I was doing my summer youth employment program, kids were out in the parks picking up and cleaning, you know. We, we have, that's one of the, the big issues that you mentioned, maintenance. How can we use these opportunities to put our kids in those positions and, and help them? So I think that there, there's definitely an opportunity that we can build from what this council, I think, has demonstrated to, to see that there is, you know, that there is an opportunity to invest maybe additional funds for that. So I'd like to see that, that definitely grow. And then lastly, just on that maintenance, I know that you talked about having additional folks. What would that entail as a whole, like in terms of, you said eighty and ninety-six thousand, but there are other lead workers that we would need? So what would be a whole, a total amount? Excuse me?
Counselor lady, if I had a wish list, it would be fifty-three FTEs. I, I will say that, but.
For, just for maintenance?
Just for planned maintenance, if I had a wish list.
Which totals to what amount?
I'm just curious. Do we know?
Eight twenty-five on all? And then as mentioned, this is only positions, so what kind of equipment would be needed to be able to do the type of maintenance that our parks require?
I'll allow Tony to come up and explain the equipment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I lead the chant? Tony, 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 Tony. I love you, man.
Hi, Tony Hernandez, Park Manager. So we'd be looking at vehicles for one. If it's in the planned maintenance for repairs, it would be tools like cordless drills, you know, type of maintenance tools to do repairs. On the landscape side, it would be riding equipment like mowers, weed eaters, just basic landscape equipment.
Do we know about how much if you, if we were to invest in additional positions as was stated, you know, the park supervisor, the three lead workers, electrician and so forth? How much would it, yeah, to outfit these positions? Do we have a?
I don't have a number, but if you're figuring maybe a lease option to, for vehicles, I think that comes about twenty, twenty-five a year. I'm not sure what that is.
And maybe that's something that we can request.
Depends on the vehicle because some of them are more complex. They have, they have to have bodies put on them and, and they have to have specialized. So in some of them are just like F-150 trucks. So I mean, those, those aren't any big deal, but some of them are more complicated. So we probably have to go back and get an estimate from Fleet as far as, you know, which positions there would be and then what tools, what equipment, and then what materials? Because obviously, you know, you're going to be working on, on systems and so you're going to need equipment as well, and that would be another expense.
So maybe if we could get a number back from, in the next week or so, so that we have that information before we end up making all the motions? I think those are all my questions and comments for right now. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you again. And Tony, I was just, we love you, man. You're sort of the Bruce Redd of Parks Department, you know what I mean? Been around for fifty-seven years, I don't know. Just kidding. You have a great team there and I, I say that with a big smile because you've done so much, all of you, for my, my district as well as the other districts. We can't thank you enough, honestly. So it's, it's a privilege to work with you, especially on this budget. Now, that's the great news. The bad news is, we had some problems at Vinland, not your, you were not part of the problem, you're part of the solution. But when we did the Vinland splash pad, we, we were not on time, not on budget, not on anything. And I know we all suffered in that frustration. So I think the, in fact, the contractor was ninety thousand dollars in liquidated damages, thereabouts. They had to pay on top. But the point for me was that my kids couldn't, they couldn't, last summer, they had no water. And so we had to work our way through that. So, but I have a solution. I don't want to just complain about that because that doesn't do any good. We have to have a solution. So I would suggest that we consider a parks management, parks project manager that could take care of these sort of things. One person that would specifically be in charge of these parks. And I looked at the budget and our budget in the line item book here, for instance, on improvements, actuals for sixteen was like one point six million dollars. So if we could have a person that could manage that, ride that every day would be helpful.
Councilmember Capriolio? Excuse me? On page B-99, there is a new position added and it is a project manager for the department.
Well, there we have it. ESPN working. You're on the, oh, the big book. I'm on the line item.
Oh, sorry.
Anyway, I think it's great that we have that in there. As I noted, one point six million, then there's another improvement section that was eight hundred sixty-four thousand dollars and a contract construction item for three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So I think, I apologize for not having that information, but I think we're definitely on the right track. And I would strongly urge my colleagues to support that because I think in the long run, we're on time, under budget, and we have very happy co-employees and constituents. So it's a win-win across the board. So thank you for including that.
Thanks, sir.
Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, Council President. Hey, Mr. Director, and good afternoon to you. And I promised to be, to be, to be short because I really am interested in the questions that Council President Soria asked as far as the wish list. I'm glad that she asked you about that. So I'm curious to see what, what, what those numbers come back. Would love to hear what it costs to outfit our maintenance division. As you, you highlighted, the number one priority in your mind would be maintaining the assets that we, that we already have better than, than, than we are. I think there is wide-ranging consensus on that topic, you know, particularly on the community and in this building, in this building as well. So I'll, I'll certainly wait for that. But suffice to say, just, go ahead.
No, no, I was just saying, about to say, thank you all, just again, for the support. It means a lot.
Yeah, well, you know, my view on parks, and this is the first time today that, that we've had an opportunity to, in my opinion, to talk about something fun. Parks are an insight and a reflection into a city. As you know that, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but it's such an important amenity where we put our treasure. What we show the world who we are in parks in many ways is, is a dramatic reflection of that. And having a well-maintained park, having a robust park system. So I am happy to have been a part of, a part of this, this city and watched, watched it increase their contribution to parks year after year. Not necessarily as much this year, but in previous years, we, we really have done a great job and largely the people on this diet has made it a priority to make sure that we put, put more of an investment back in parks. Not nearly, not nearly enough, but we've come a long way. So with that, Mr. Director, how, how, in my comments there, just, just know that I, I think that we, we all recognize the importance of parks and the important amenity it is for, you know, for all the residents of our city as well as those that are, that are contemplating investment in our city. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
And Councilmember Baines, I just want to add, we haven't finalized the budget yet, so there may be an opportunity, right? To augment, I think, what the investments already have been made to parks. So thank you. I look forward to getting that information from you guys. And then also just, I could get some numbers from the pre-recession. I'd just like to see a comparison, to see how far we are, we are from that and how it, how it's been trending. So that would be important to me to see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to our last, which is the Finance Department.
Its funding source is primarily the general fund. Department's overall budget is seven point four million, which is about a two point three percent increase from the eighteen amended budget. Total permanent FTE positions is fifty-five with a point two five increase from FY-18. The department's overall revenue budget is one point five million, which is about forty-eight thousand, less than FY-18, which is primarily due to a fifty-three thousand eight hundred decrease in variable reimbursements. On the expenditure side, overall expenditures are budgeted at four point seven million, which is an increase of ninety-eight thousand one hundred. And that's primarily corresponding to increases observed in their interdepartmental budget. And within that interdepartmental budget, you'll see that there was seventy-one thousand seven hundred that relates to information system services, eleven thousand three hundred for network replacement charges and eighteen thousand four hundred for facilities management charges that correspond to assigned square footage. On the personnel side, again, it is a static budget. However, there was a point two five increase in FTE, which relates to the addition last year of a business tax permit inspector position that is now fully funded in FY-19. Counsel, that ends my overall review. The director and the departmental staff are here for your questions.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment at this time? Seeing none. I only had a couple of questions in regards to some of the line items. Henry, if you can just help me out. I think page fifty-seven in the line item, just question in, in terms of the leave pay, payoff at termination. What is, when do we do that or how does that function? I've seen that, I know the actuals for 2017 is a lot higher and then now it's kind of, it dropped this year, 2018, but then it went back up for 2019?
Correct. So in FY-19, we're looking at forty-two thousand seven hundred. And what that is, is we have a mechanism so where we then have a separate fund that we cover those type of terminations. So for a given year then, we are trying to replenish that fund or checkbook to cover future folks that do leave the department. So we're just seeing a trend where it's actually coming down compared to like the seventeen actuals.
And it's based on a three-year moving average that's assigned via, I believe it's bargaining unit?
That is correct. By bargaining unit.
Yeah, based on bargaining unit and the average number of hours that, that the individuals who are leaving city service, and this is the only time that this fund is used is when someone leaves city service. And so we, all the funds in the city contribute to that fund and then that fund is used to pay out whatever leave payoffs there are to individuals leaving city service.
Okay. And then, thank you for that. On page fifty-eight, I know that for 2018, there was a personnel contingency. Is that money being expended? What is that for?
No, that is not being expended. In effect.
Why did we set it there?
It all, it's, it's all related to the attrition savings that we budget. So on a monthly basis, we will monitor and evaluate if the department has such attrition savings. And in this case, there was attritions identified. So then we move it down or reclassify it to that account that you're looking at. So in essence, that amount then becomes locked up, can't be spent.
And so what are you guys doing with it for 2019? So that's monies that are there?
We will replicate the same process. So starting in July, we will then start looking at, are there attrition savings? And if so, we will then move those savings down to this specific account to lock it up. And we'll do this on a monthly basis in order to.
Lock it up for what purpose?
So that you can't spend it.
Well, because, if, if, if I may, because what, what, where the money is right now is in, is in employee services, is actually in fifty-one one oh one, which is, which is on page fifty-seven, I believe. And right now, that's where it resides. And as Henry pointed out, they will go through on a monthly basis and move that money down into contingency. And that is, is, is in essence, what that five point, was it five point four million that's identified in the general fund that's helping to balance the general fund. So that money's already being used.
And so that's what we just typically do every budget?
Every month, he goes through and he, and he examines each general fund department to see whether or not there are attrition savings that can be moved down into that personnel contingency. And because no money can be spent out of that contingency, it is in essence locked up within the department and cannot be used.
But then every year we, or was it?
This is the first year we've ever actually done this.
On, on this particular one?
Yes.
Or are we doing it in all departments?
No, just in, just in the general fund.
All general fund departments.
General, all general fund departments. Okay. So we will probably start seeing that, so they are, I guess, locked up, but every year we'll probably see some attrition and savings, correct?
Right, but that's being used to balance the overall general fund. And we talked about before sweeping the salary savings every month and we needed to hit that five point four million dollar number in order to balance this current year's budget, correct, Henry?
That is correct.
Yeah, and so we're going to continue that practice moving forward because, because we are relying on those salary savings to help us balance the general fund. So that's why when Henry says they're locked up every month, when a department, a general fund department has salary savings, we, we take it away so that we can balance the overall general fund.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think there are any other questions?
Our controller's not going to get the same question about his wish list?
Yeah. Okay, what, what, what wish list do you have? I, I guess I don't hear my constituents, you know, say, hey, the controller needs more resources.
You know, I'm going to start a controllers' foundation so we can promote us even more, you know. Wow. You know, probably the, probably the quickest, easiest fix would be a, or thing that we need in finance is a long-term contract for banking services. But we'll deal with that next week. No. Yeah, actually, right now it is, yeah.
Well, maybe if you guys bring it with enough time and we don't feel like we have to make a decision last minute, then, you know, you would have a contract signed by today.
I see, okay. No, you know, I'm going to say something that probably you're not going to hear any other department say. And I think we have adequate funding to get through the upcoming year. We have adequate resources. We've got a.
Enough staff?
Yeah, we've got a great staff. We've got, we're, we're very creative with how we use our, and stretch our O and M dollars. And I think that, I think we're going to be okay next year. I think we are. So I, you know, like I said, I'm violating every bureaucratic principle by saying this, but I think we're going to be okay for next year.
Well, that's good. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, we got to be fair across the board, so I appreciate that. Thanks for checking me, Wilma. Okay, so I think that wraps it up for today. I want to thank the staff, the administration for the presentations, and we look forward to continuing to have, having these budgetary discussions over this week and next week. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So we conclude for today.
That's right.
Oh, yes. Back at ten tomorrow.